Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
The first item on the agenda this evening is the oath of office for our new District Seven Alderman, Marshall Spencer.
Please raise your hand and greet it after me. I, Marshall Spencer.
I, Marshall Spencer.
Having been appointed to the position of District Seven Alderman.
Having been appointed to the position of District Seven Alderman.
Of the City of Manassas.
The City of Manassas.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of Alderman.
Discharge the duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations Alderman Spencer. Great to have you here. The next item on the agenda is public comments on any matter of.
We'll take roll call.
Oh.
Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, we should probably do that, shouldn't we? So we would need roll call, please.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Carl Kramer.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Keon.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Okay, now we'll move on to public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment and anything on the agenda or anything that the Alderman should be aware of, we'd like to hear from you now.
Hi, my name's Chris Klein, 730 Kais. I'm here tonight to talk about Seafood Fest 2015 and I'm a member of Manassas Rotary. Seafood Fest this year is September 11th and 12th. It's at Jefferson Park where it's always been since 1993. The website is seafoodfest.us. You can see all the comprehensive information online of all the weekend events there, so I recommend that you go and check it all out. The Seafood Fest is put on by the Nina Manassas Rotaries. It's the Manassas Rotary and two Nina Rotaries. Seafood Fest began in 1993. It's between the two, the three rotaries, we've returned over $500,000 back to the communities. This year, 2015 recipient for the Manassas part of the proceeds will go to the Manassas Blue Jay Band for Uniforms again and to the Boys and Girls Club. Some of the other recipients from the past years for Manassas proceeds have been the Trestle Trail, the concession stand at Calder Stadium, band uniforms last year, YMCA programs, Salvation Army, many projects with the Manassas Library, K-9 Unit, Defibrillator Unit, Manassas Legion Baseball, Christine Anne Center, and many, many other projects. On Friday and Saturday, the bands start at four o'clock. We have two, four really good bands. We have over 70 food, dessert, and drink items this weekend. Again, we're going to be featuring the lobster and the salmon, two different meals. You can get discounted tickets now. You can get them from any Rotary member. You can get them online at the website. You can purchase them or at any of the local community first credit unions. The lobster tickets are going to be $35 discounted early and the salmon will be 25. You can also purchase the tokens online too. So for all your drink and any other food that you want to purchase there, you can also buy those early as well. And so I encourage you to do that. We have a ton of sponsors this year. We're looking to have another great year for this. And the most important thing is we're always looking for volunteers. You can go to the volunteer spot and volunteer for a very short period of time if you want to, or you can take a very long shift. So we're always looking for volunteers. So I expect everybody in this room that's from Manassas to be volunteering for some event, some place during this weekend, that weekend. Because what's, what we do is how we split the proceeds up is through volunteerism. So if we get more volunteers than those other rotaries, we get the higher amount of the proceeds that we get to give back to the community. So that's part of the, part of the deal with how the volunteers work. So that's why I encourage all those at home, all the people in Manassas, all you in this room, to volunteer for this event. It's always a great event. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment this evening?
Christopher Evenson, 523 Broad Street. And I'd like to speak about the Racine Bridge proposals. My wife and I live at 523 Broad Street, which is three properties from the bridge itself. We've lived there 18 years and I lived seven years before that on Willow Lane on Doty Island in Manassas. So I'm familiar with the bridge, both ends of it, and the two intersections as both a driver, pedestrian, and bicyclist. We strongly oppose moving the north end of the bridge to the east of its current location. We also oppose installation of a roundabout on the north end. What we favor is preservation of the existing north end pocket park and mature trees on both ends of the bridge and on the power canal peninsula. We're in favor of preserving Dr. Larson's property, which currently results in $10,000 per year in real estate taxes. We favor saving the cost of condemning his property, assessed at $385,000, and the additional cost of relocating businesses. We favor keeping the north end intersection stoplight controlled as we believe this is safer, more familiar, and less intimidating for pedestrians and bicyclists. We do complement the DOT on several points. All of the DOT options contemplate better pedestrian and bicycle travel over the bridge. All of them contemplate improved vertical clearance for boats, so the bridge will open less frequently. All of them contemplate thin coat concrete instead of a metal grate to reduce noise. The two questions though on the north end are, does the bridge get moved from its current location, taking tax-based mature trees and public access simply to speed traffic past our downtown? And the second question is, is this intersection controlled by stoplights or a roundabout? From what we've been told, the city favors option F that you'll hear about this evening. This option takes the Bonta Building on the south end and it takes the pocket park and Dr. Larson's property on the north end. Takes a large swath of the peninsula on the south end with mature trees as well as trees on the north end. From our perspective, they have selected the worst option possible since it moves the bridge closer to all of the residential properties on our block. The distance to the 12 units in Headwaters from the bridge is cut approximately in half. With this comes traffic noise, headlight glare, bridge horns and clangers. Keeping the bridge in its current location keeps the traffic in its current commercial surrounding. Shifting the bridge to the east points it away from our downtown and takes out many mature trees, parks, et cetera. In exchange, we get a roundabout and a faster flow of traffic on Racine. We don't believe that's a good deal for our neighborhood or the city in general. Alternative F will also drastically change the Racine and Broad Street intersection depending on whether left turns are allowed on and off Racine. Racine is the only way we have to get to our home on Broad Street since it's a one-way street. What we have currently isn't perfect, but it's familiar and we've learned to live with it. One last point I'd like to make is with regard to the public input on the north end issues. As to the 20 written comments submitted, they are equally divided on the roundabout issue, seven in favor, six against, seven neutral. Most of the comments in favor of the roundabout come from Doty Island residents across the river from the north end. I urge you to read the comments and especially those of Sandy Taylor and Paul Burnett and Addis Hilleker. They're the most detailed and thoughtful and reasoned of the comments submitted. We had a meeting with the DOT and the city on August 4th, 2015. About 20 people from our neighborhood attended, as did Alderman Taylor. When asked for a show of hands how many favored a roundabout, not one hand went up. These are folks who cared enough to show up and sit for three hours trying to hash out a solution. That's important public input and it clearly shows the majority of people who have provided input are against putting a roundabout on the north end of the bridge. Lastly, I would ask that you listen to our Alderman, Mr. Taylor, on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evenson. Is there anyone else?
Sandra Daybill-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I want to thank Chris Evenson because I've lost my voice and he made it really easy because I echo everything he just said, 100%. I'm going to save some of my comments until after the presentation in case there's something that might spark my interest so I can save a little time. But we are adamantly opposed to any shifting of that bridge to the east and a roundabout would be detrimental at the bottom on the north end. To me, it's like turning on a faucet, on a water faucet. It's just going to make this traffic flow and trying to get access to Broad Street will be virtually impossible for any of us that have to access from Racine. So I will save some of my thoughts. I did want to bring up something else. First of all, I'd like to welcome Alderman Spencer. For the people who are viewing at home, just to let them know, the other candidates were really highly qualified. It was a tough choice, I think, for the council. I don't think we could have gone wrong, no offense. But I think they did a really good job and you don't have to worry, I'm not in your district, so you won't have to be hearing from me. The other thing I wanted to bring up was I have a little pet peeve with the consent agenda. I brought it to the mayor's attention before work. The understanding I have of a consent agenda is that it should be routine, non-controversial items that are put together that can be voted on in one vote, such as approval of minutes or something that is just routine and it really is, you know, more of a matter of, you know, bookwork, okay? I'm confused tonight because there's three items that I think would require a supermajority vote. Two of them are actually mentioned later on under ordinances of resolutions. One being an agreement with Appleton for money that I don't think was budgeted, $56,000 to assist with crossing Midway. If it's not in the budget, I would think that would require a two-thirds vote. The acquisition, possible acquisition of Shoot Street parking lot, which was not in the budget, and also an agreement regarding Woodliddon subdivision. So why are these things in the consent agenda? To me, it causes confusion and you wouldn't put it in there if it has to have a two-thirds vote. I would really like to see this consent agenda streamlined to controversial, non, you know, non-budgetary items that just because another committee recommended them. The unfortunate part is it's usually the Plan Commission and Park and Rec and neither one of those are televised, so the public does not know what was discussed. And speaking of discussion, as a new Alderman, I really encourage you to not take things as face value and this goes for everyone. I, as a bystander, really enjoy an open discussion where everything's laid out on the table and things are balanced out, the pros and cons in every project. To me, if anything looks too good, it probably isn't. You know, there's always a flip side. So when, when things come up before the council and they're just voted on with no talk, I really am skeptical. It makes me wonder, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of department head staff and consultants. And I think we've kept our announcement here a little longer than what we were hoping to. We do have Candy Huber here this evening. Some, oh, there she is. I'm like, where is she? Our new HR coordinator and I think that our administrative services director would like to introduce her.
I'd please Andrew Candy. Candy, if you'll understand though. Candy just started last Monday. She comes to us with a wealth of education, undergraduate degree in business and marketing. She has a master's degree in HR and counseling. And then as part of her last position, which was over seven years as an HR and safety manager at a manufacturing company, she went back and got a safety and engineering technologies associate degree so she could better perform her position there. As I mentioned, she has been with a manufacturing company for seven years and prior to that, some additional general business experience, definitely in the public sector prior to now. But she had a range of anywhere from 80 to 250 employees at one time that she was the HR rep for. Certainly knows all of the personnel laws and things like that and we're going to be obviously doing a lot of training, but we're off to a really good start and I personally am very happy to have her here.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Is their office going to be down by you down there, Peggy?
It is. The transition is in progress. The last person we have to move is our payroll specialist and that should happen first week of September. So everybody in administrative services will be on that first floor. IT is also taking some space on the lower level.
Did you want to add anything Candy?
Just glad to be here.
Glad to have you on board Candy.
Thank you.
Item two is the Wisconsin Department of Transportation presentation on the Racine Street Bridge. So we want, being that a lot of the council members haven't seen the proposals for the bridge, the DOT would like us at some point to make a recommendation as a city as to which option we prefer. We thought we would have them present all the options this evening and give you a chance to look at them, think about them, and then later in September, we'll ask for a recommendation once you have a chance to really think about this a little bit further and if you have any other questions as well to ask the DOT. So at this point, we'll have Bill Bertrand go through a short presentation and then if there's questions, we can go from there as well.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to come down tonight. And again, as the mayor mentioned, the idea is just to give you an overview of the different alternatives that are under consideration at this point. Really, the project derived from an inspection that we had done from a consultant back and we got a report in the summer of 2012 that identified a number of issues that needed to be addressed with the current Racine Street Bridge, either looking at a major rehabilitation of the existing bridge or the possibility of a new replacement bridge as a solution to the issues that are out there today. The original bridge was built in 1952. Besides the deficiencies electrical, mechanical that were identified, certainly the existing bridge has only three 10-foot wide travel lanes through, two actually travel lanes and a center turn lane, as well as six-foot sidewalks directly adjacent to those travel lanes. So total width of 42 feet and would be less than desirable as far as for bicycles and pedestrians crossing the current bridge. We started our design environmental study in the spring of 2014. Since that time, we've had two public involvement meetings, a couple of local official meetings. We also had a stakeholder advisory group that was set up and have had three meetings with them to date. One of the first things that we did really upon picking up this and looking at the potential solutions was ask the local community, the stakeholder advisor group, and the city officials as far as what are some goals and constraints really for the surrounding area, goals that the city's looking at for the project, the vision for the downtown area that they have such that any alternatives that could be developed would really be, would mesh well with the vision for the community in the downtown area. What we have on the projection screen and the initial sheet in the handout that you have is what we call a project issues map, really that identifies some of the things that were brought forward to us by the stakeholder committee as things that should be considered, goals for the project, things that they wanted to see achieved by that. So I won't go through it in detail, but certainly every alternative that we've developed was with these visions in mind that were developed from that initial group. With that being said, certainly, I mean, the public involvement meetings are one part of the process, but as we said, I mean, throughout that we're willing to certainly meet with anyone during the project. And one example, certainly that was the recent meeting with the property residents on August 4th that was mentioned earlier. One of the first things, I mean, that we did as well in looking through this on any movable bridge project, we do need to rule out at least the option for a fixed bridge. We did that relatively early on just from the clearance that would be needed, the impact to the downtown community. That was ruled out as an option that we didn't really develop anything beyond an initial look at that. Also, in looking at a no-build option, a rehabilitation option, a replace on existing alignment, and then multiple replacement on new alignment. With those new alignment alternatives, we did look at the constraints out there on the west side of the bridge with the issues with the existing dam in place on the west side, as well as the faith technology development on the west side of Racine Street and the north shore as being constraints that really made us look to the east side of the existing alignment for any of the replacement alternatives that would be on new location. So I guess with that as a precursor, we brought seven alternatives to our initial project meeting that was in October of 2014, the first public involvement meeting, and that would look at the second sheet that's within your handout. To that meeting, we had alternatives really A through G that were presented at the October 2014 meeting. A being a no-build, B being a rehabilitation option, alternative C was a replace on existing alignment, and then D through G were four alternatives that were looked at for replacing on new alignment of one variety or the other. Alternative H, which is shown in the lower right-hand corner, was actually developed based on feedback that we got at that October 2014 meeting. It's very closely linked with alternative G, but had a slight alignment shift on the south end that was considered an improvement in which is why alternative G was ruled out. The five alternatives then that are shown in green on the display are alternatives that were brought forward to our second public meeting in June of this year. The three alternatives that are shown in green, or excuse me, in red fonts on the display were basically ruled out as part of a screening analysis that we did between the time of our October 2014 meeting and the most recent meeting in June, done in cooperation and consultation again with city officials in going back to the original goals and visions that were identified for the project. Alternative C, which was a replace on existing alignment, the main reason that that alignment dropped off from further consideration was that what was identified early on was the need to improve intersections at Main Street on the north side as well as Annap and Kais on the south side. And that alternative, really with a replacement option, the limits of the project are the touchdown limits of the bridge. So that option does not get into improvements at either intersection on the north side or the south side of the existing bridge that's out there today. It would replace the bridge and the touchdown limits would essentially be at where the abutments would be on the north and south shores. Alternative D, similarly, it did have some improvements on the north end, but did not get into improving any of the intersection at the Kais and Annap Street on the south side. So C and D basically because they didn't include more of the intersection improvements, which the other alternatives did, dropped off from further consideration. And as I had mentioned, alternative G dropped off because alternative H was essentially considered an enhancement of alternative G. Briefly to describe the difference between alternatives E, F, and H are more in how they treat the intersections on the north and south side of the, of the bridge more than anything else. The one thing all the replacement options have in common is that they do include an improved and wider cross-section across the existing bridge. They vary from one to the other and I'll explain that a little bit as we get into an overview of them, but they would accommodate 11-foot travel lanes compared to the existing 10-foot travel lanes that are out there today. They all would include five-foot bicycle lanes on the outside of the travel lanes and then they all would include a six-foot sidewalk on the outside of the bicycle lanes that are out there. So under any of those options, the replacement options would provide greatly improved bicycle and pedestrian accommodations across the bridge. Alternative, if we go into a little bit more detail, I won't discuss in great detail alternative B, but that is in your packet. The one thing to mention, again, alternative B is a rehabilitation of the existing bridge. We'll bring it up, the limitations that it, first of all, it will provide for all the deficiencies on the bridge. What it doesn't do is increase the width of the existing bridge or the clearance of the existing movable span. So from the standpoint that the bicycle and pedestrians are dealing with three 10-foot lanes across the existing bridge and then the sidewalks adjacent to that, that would remain in the after condition under a rehab option. And again, the marine or the boating clearance underneath the existing movable sand would stay as it is today. The construction duration for this option would be the shortest, approximately one year, and there are no real estate impacts associated with it. So from an impact statement, it has the least impacts of it on the alternatives, but it does not address some of the other deficiencies that are out there relative to the width and marine clearance out there today. Alternative E, as we bring it up, would be alignment on new location. Alternative E looks at traffic signals on the north end at the Main Street intersection and would look at an improved one-way stop condition on the south side at the Annap and Kais Street intersection. You can see on the south side, we're just to the west as we get across the island peninsula here and continuing to the north, then we move to the east side of the existing movable span as we get to the north side. One of the reasons certainly in looking at location for alternative E in proximity, by keeping the movable span of the bridge as it's shown under the arrow there, on new location, we're able to essentially have the first year of construction without impacting traffic on the existing Racine Street Bridge. So while the overall construction for this project would be two years, the impact of traffic out on this option would be only one construction season. The new bridge and replacement option again does provide three 11-foot travel lanes. It would have one traveling in each direction and maintain center turn lane, that 11-foot turn lane across that currently is out there today as well, five-foot bike lanes like I mentioned, and then six-foot sidewalks on the outside of that. Several sheets into the packet, it does have typical sections for all of these different alternatives and we won't have you page ahead, but as you get to that, you'll be able to see that in more detail. One of the things again that any of the replacement options also provides is improved vertical clearance for marine traffic. While the movable span itself will be relatively close to the clearance of the existing, but has slightly improved clearance, we are looking at a flanking span just on the south side of the, of the movable span of roughly 30-foot plus or minus slab span that would improve the vertical clearance in the neighborhood of three to four feet from what's existing out there today. So that would give an opportunity for a lot of the boating traffic to clear underneath of a new bridge without requiring a bridge to open. We don't have an exact number of reductions on the openings that it would create, but based on a survey out there and in looking at the existing vessels and talking to bridge tenors. tenors, there is a thought that it would significantly reduce the number of crossing, or number of openings on a new bridge option, which would certainly be a benefit to the downtown traffic and circulation in the area. Again, full rid of closure, approximately one construction season with construction two, and there are, in yellow, what we have is shown as real estate impacts. So on the north side, we would be acquiring the dentist office, Dr. Larson's office on the north side, getting across the peninsula property, and on the south side, we are getting into the Aradonley parcel, which is, the city is currently looking at redeveloping, and a lot of the location for the option on the south side has been coordinated with the city to date, and their, their ongoing plans with respect to the Aradonley parcel. That's alternative E. Then we'll get to the next alternative, which would be alternative F. And again, these are all options that were presented at the first public meeting. Alternative F has similar features in that it's a little, on the south side, we're looking to be located just to the west in the Aradonley parcel, and on the east, or excuse me, on the north side, we're looking to the east of the existing alignment in Dr. Larson's area. The difference certainly is that the intersection treatments on both sides of the river are different. This alternative looks at dual roundabouts, a roundabout at the Main Street intersection. Anytime we look at a traffic signal, we do need to look at roundabouts as an equal alternative. Roundabouts have shown, in general, to move traffic safer through them, as well as operationally, they function better. We did do what we call an intersection control evaluation, looking at the Main Street intersection for both the traffic signal and the roundabout option. Both would have adequate operations. The roundabout does perform significantly better than a traffic signal on the north end as well, based on future traffic at their location. But again, both have adequate traffic operations on the north end. There were some concerns brought forward with respect to how a roundabout would operate when the, the movable span is in the up condition. The roundabout is essentially a single-lane roundabout, but what we do have, and if you zoom in closely on a larger scale, you can see there's a, what we call a bypass lane, basically, for southbound Racine Street traffic to continue to the west on Main Street. There would be a two-lane approach. That outside lane would allow traffic to continue through the roundabout and continue west on Main Street when the movable bridge would be in the up condition. Likewise, for eastbound traffic on Main Street approaching in, there's a two-lane approach. The left approach lane would have traffic looking to go north on Racine, so that would be able to continue that movement while the bridge is in the up condition. So essentially, the extra lane within the roundabout would allow traffic to continue operating while the bridge is in the up condition. On the south side, then, again, we compared a roundabout to a one-way stop condition, and as I mentioned before, typically, we only look at roundabouts when the traffic signals are required. There are no traffic signals warranted at the Annap Kaiser Street intersection, but the unique aspect with looking at roundabouts on both sides of the river with this alternative is that for the entire area of the bridge between the two roundabouts, we're essentially able to eliminate the middle turn lane across the bridge, the reason being that the roundabouts also can serve the function of a U-turn within that, so there's no need, really. All left turns and U-turns are accommodated from the same approach lane through that. So that center turn lane is accommodated by the left turn lane through there. There's a significant savings overall with the structure under this option compared to alternative E, that was the first one that we went through. And I'll give a brief overview at the end of these alternatives as far as how they relate cost-wise to each other. But just, that's essentially why, again, we looked at the roundabout on the south side. It improves the intersection, but it also provides a significant benefit in a narrower bridge across the entire span between the two roundabouts. I didn't really touch on the improved vertical clearance, but again, the improved vertical clearance for marine traffic or boating traffic is a commonality for all of the alternatives that we're looking at. Alternative H, again, similar in some respect to the previous alternates, different in that it treats the intersections differently. This is really kind of a combination of alternative E and alternative F that we looked at previously, in that we have a roundabout on the north end at Main Street. If you look at alternative F compared to H, they're essentially identical on the north side. If you looked at on, on the south end, alternative E and alternative H are essentially identical on the south end as far as how they treat the one-way stop condition. The difference in the, some of the partial benefits here, again, we need to look at a roundabout at Main Street because traffic signals are warranted, so that's an equal and viable alternative at this location. What this allows us to do, then, is to maintain the, the two lanes or the narrower lanes that we mentioned, the narrower width that we mentioned under alternative F is realized across the bascule or the movable span, which is the most expensive portion of the bridge. So we have a narrower bridge on the north side of the structure, and we basically widen out to three lanes with adding that center turn lane as we get across the peninsula and proceed south toward the Annap and Kaiser Street intersection. There isn't a lot more to get into with this alternative in that, really, I said, the south side is common with alternative E, the north side is in common with alternative F overall. Again, alternatives E, F, and H all have a full closure of the existing bridge for the second year of construction, but the first year is essentially construction without impacting existing traffic in the area. We brought these, all alternatives, to our, again, meeting mentioned in October, and had, or excuse me, in June, received comment on them in June. We certainly heard from the condominium and Broad Street residents with respect to concerns as far as noise, potential increase with shifting in alignment to the east, as well as concerns that they brought forward as far as potential headlight glare with respect to the fact that the bridge, again, being shifted to the east of the existing location. Subsequent to the June meeting, then, we did look at the potential to see if we could shift on the north end, the alignment slightly to the, the west of what was shown under alternative F. And in essence, it also changed, changes the alignment compared to alternative F all the way across the river with that. We have a different, really, angle across the river. As we cross the peninsula with alternative J, we're much closer to the existing alignment. And again, you can look at the alternatives and compare them one to the other as you have time over the next month that you're looking at it. But certainly, across the peninsula, alternative J is shifted west of alternative F, closer to existing alignment. Has a different approach as we get into a roundabout at the Main Street intersection. For that reason, and again, if you're looking at the differences in alternative F versus J, the main difference for a roundabout is that we have to incorporate what we call kind of a right turn bypass lane for traffic that is eastbound on Main Street and looking to turn south to head across the Racine Street Bridge. The reason being is that the skew of the approaching roadways greatly increases and enforces that right turn bypass lane to be incorporated and included within that. The roundabout will operate safely and efficiently, similar to alternative F. It's just different in the fact that your eastbound to southbound right turn will essentially merge into Racine Street outside, and as they're exiting the roundabout in comparison to alternative F, where the traffic merged into the circle and then continued on to exit south. So just a little different in that there's an additional splitter island that's within there. The other features of the north roundabout at Main with the, the bypass lane that would incorporate the southbound to eastbound move and the Main Street eastbound to northbound Racine Street move that allows traffic to continue moving while the movable bridge is in the up condition are similar to the alternative F. The thought is certainly, in the feedback that we've gotten a little bit from the condo group, is that, and the Broad Street residents, was the difference in angle approaching it as they felt was an improvement from their concerns for headlight glare. The noise concerns that were brought forward, I'll get into in a couple of slides on here. We have a picture of a bridge, the Maple Oregon Bridge in Surging Bay, that has essentially a closed grid or a concrete lightweight movable span. The current bridge at Racine has an open steel grid span, so by looking at more of the lightweight concrete for the surface on the movable span, the noise issue from the traffic is much less an improved compared to an open steel grid. The bicycle pedestrian, or bicycle accommodations mainly, but also pedestrian accommodations are also improved situation crossing that concrete lightweight span compared to an open steel grid span like you have out there today. With alternative J, and you can see next to the alternative J notes, I have a one on here. Alternative J is really focused more on how the, the roundabout at the north end is treated. We could incorporate alternative J with either a roundabout at the Kaiser Street intersection, similar to what's shown on this display. The next version of alternative J that we have basically just has a two next to it, which indicates that alternative J could be incorporated with the one-way stop condition on the south end as well. So really, the, the major feature for alternative J is a difference on the north end, but you can see this has a number two at the area, so it can be incorporated with either intersection treatment on the south intersection at Kaiser-Annap Street. One of the initial issues that we looked at with the alternative J design was in, with this right turn bypass lane that we incorporated into it, that the initial thought was the, the bascule or the movable span was going to need to be wider on the range of 12 to 15 feet. The thought being that as, as we get into the curve in this area on the far north end, we can continue a curve through the movable span, so essentially, that width would need to be maintained across the bridge. The width would be maintained, basically meaning the sidewalk wider, but the fact that we were looking at 12 to 15 foot, somewhere in that range of additional width, would have had the potential to increase the maintenance and operational costs on an annual basis. Also, would have looked at, certainly, a rehabilitation of this bridge would be required plus or minus 20 to 25 years in that range from the, the future construction date, and a rehab cost would certainly be increased to some extent with a wider bridge on that. Our design consultant firm has looked at ways that they could possibly incorporate some design features that would narrow the width of alternative J up to make it more comparable to the bridge under either alternative F or H, with more of a two travel lanes and more standard bicycle lanes and sidewalk. They have had some success in narrowing the bridge down such that, in effect, right now, with some features, and I won't get into the technical explanation, but they can make the overall width of the bridge under alternative J fairly comparable to the width of a movable span under either alternative F or alternative H. So the, the earlier thought that alternative J would have increased potential for maintenance and operational costs has really gone away with that. There's still a potential, because of some of the things in looking at from a technical standpoint, it could have increased rehab cost, but that would only be at a, a future rehabilitation project some 20 to 25 years in the future, and the amount of that is probably less than originally thought as well on that. With that, then, the next slide, or excuse me, the next sheet in your packet would be looking at the typical sections. And what this does, the top typical section looks at the existing bridge, the three 10-foot lanes, and in, there's sometimes, I even fall into the trap of seeing three 10-foot travel lanes. It's essentially two 10-foot travel lanes with a 10-foot center turn lane, and then the six-foot sidewalks directly adjacent to those three 10-foot lanes for a total width of roughly 42 feet inside the railings. With the three-lane section, that is prevalent under alternative E, which has the signal on the north end and the one-way stop on the south, three 11-foot turn lanes, five-foot bicycle lanes, and six-foot sidewalks. Outside of that, so certainly an improved width, better accommodations for bicycles and pedestrians. The two-lane section, which is common to alternative F and potentially to alternative J, depending on which southern intersection treatment is selected, essentially just eliminates that center turn lane, but has identical dimensions for the travel lanes, the bicycle lanes, and the sidewalk. One of the decisions that certainly, I mean, the, the city is also going to, that we're going to look for direction from them on, and it's strictly municipality preference, is whether or not there's a desire to have a barrier wall that separates the, the outside edge of the bicycle lane from the sidewalk itself. Some communities prefer to have that, feel that it gives a little bit more safety to pedestrians on the sidewalk. Others have chosen not to. Certainly, one of the big differences is in winter maintenance and snow removal on the outside sidewalk, and that with a six-foot clearance and an extra wall in the area, there would likely be the need to purchase some additional storm removal equipment for the municipality involved in that. But again, that is something that is really a municipality decision, and we'd be looking for some guidance, and we have gotten some, at least initial preference from Manasha, that they would like to see a barrier dividing the, the outside of the bike lane from the sidewalk itself. One other option that we did show, at least, on this would be the idea of a 10-foot shared-use path on the outside. This does, still with this option, we need to have some separation from the travel lane, the 11-foot travel lane to the barrier wall, so we still require a minimum of four-foot offset, then the barrier, and then a 10-foot shared-use path on the outside. There would be the potential for some local cost share to construct anything wider than a six-foot standard sidewalk on the outside over there, but that is something from the local community. If there's a desire, a strong enough desire, to pursue additional width on that and that shared-use path option, something that could be discussed, but again, there would be the potential for some local cost share involved in that. So I, that is something that may be more of a final design detail, but again, some of it, just putting it out there for common at this point. The next picture in your packet I mentioned is essentially the picture of the, the concrete, lightweight concrete movable span on Maple Oregon in Surging Bay. Again, this is something that could be incorporated into the design here in Manasha, would certainly go a long way toward reducing noise. The other thing from a noise standpoint that can be done in looking at is currently the bells that sound for the raising of the bridge, really continue sounding throughout the entire opening-close cycle. With a new bridge, there's some things that can be done to program that such that the bells really turn off once the, the lifting of the bridge is done. So it'd be less time that the bells would be sounding out there with each raise of the bridge. The last picture that's in your packet just really shows a little bit with any of the replacement bridge options, a conceptual idea, again, of what could be done to improve clearance in the area that's shown in orange, again, is roughly 30 feet just to the south of the movable span. That would be a slab span with improved clearance for boating mariner traffic that would be proceeding through that. There's some pictures on that of a bridge in Mannawak, as well as the Tackle Street Bridge, that incorporates some similar features adjacent to the movable span. From a headlight glare standpoint, we had a previous display that we showed at our August 4th meeting. We're in the process of kind of revising and updating that display, so we don't have that in the packet to present to you tonight, but we have done research in looking at headlight glare, quoting the sources, as far as that we used typically for low headlight glare, which is common in urban areas. You're looking at about 160-foot distance worth- looking at about 160 foot distance where the glare itself is an issue. Maximum of 450 to 500 foot distance where if your headlights are on high beams where the headlight glare would be an issue. Certainly that's not to say that you won't see the lights or the lights won't be visible at a longer distance, but from a glare standpoint, that's the upper limits of the glare. And again, according to looking at it, that's even, it's based on looking at the National Highway Organization that's set that through the automotive industry. So that's the glare distance, but certainly again, we would acknowledge and if you're looking to completely eliminate light, the light dot itself would certainly extend a farther distance than that. The one thing we have looked at with any of the profiles, certainly the high point for the bridge is really at or near the movable span of the bridge on the north end. Headlights as they project out from the front of the car actually project down slightly from that point. So they would actually be projecting essentially into the bridge itself, the pavement and the structure going down. So instead of projecting across, they would be projecting kind of down into the road itself, which is on an increasing grade. So that would be certainly finding against it. We have also indicated the city has asked if there'd be some things that could be looked at from a railing standpoint. As we move into final designs, certainly there are alternatives that could be investigated from a railing standpoint. Again, there may be the potential for local cost share. The decision from the city standpoint as well as far as whether they want a barrier between the outside of the bike lane and the sidewalk or not certainly would influence as well a little bit as far as that headlight glare issue with putting an inside barrier in there. Then the outside barrier does not need to be crash worthy. Federal highways requires essentially one crash worthy barrier between the travel lanes and the edge of the bridge. So if you put the crash worthy barrier between the outside of the bike lane and the sidewalk, the outside railing on the outside of the sidewalk thing can be more visible and is more than essentially to protect from a bicycle standpoint. And then the height of that needs to be, I believe, 48 to 52 inches from the bike standpoint, but it can be more open railing certainly and allow for vision from pedestrians to looking out on that. Cost, I said I would certainly just touch briefly on cost and the difference between the alternatives. Of the four build alternatives that are on new location, alternative F and J are essentially comparable and I'm not going to get into exact cost, but just in reference from one to the other. Alternative F and alternative J are essentially comparable for initial construction cost. Alternative H, which has the roundabout on the north side and the one-way stop on the south side is on the neighborhood of roughly $700,000 to $750,000 more than either alternative F or alternative J. And then alternative E, which is the signal improvement on the north end and the one-way stop on the south end is roughly $2.5 million more expensive than either alternative F or J. Again, more expensive, alternative E is the most expensive of the four build alternatives. The reason again that alternative E is the most expensive is that you're looking at a wider bridge across the entire length of the river crossing for that. So alternative F and J are the least expensive of the complete bridge replacements. Alternative, and again on new location, alternative H would be next in line and then alternative E would be the most expensive on that. Schedule wise, looking forward and certainly we recognize there's some things we're still working through with the city on specific to under any of the alternatives or some questions on Broad Street access and we're working, looking at some alternatives for that at this point. But from a schedule standpoint, we're looking at having a draft environmental document by the end of this year roughly, which means we want to have a preferred alternative really selected by mid-October timeframe. So plus or minus two months from current day. We would like to see direction from the city between now and then as far as what the city would prefer, have a preference for one of the alternatives that we're looking at. The DOT would be responsible for making the ultimate decision on a preferred alternative that would go forward in environmental document, but certainly we would weigh the preference of the city heavily when making that decision out here. The one thing and certainly the city officials are aware of it that we've talked with, but to make everyone aware if you're not already, there's a state statute, it's called Section 84.10, dealing with the future maintenance of bridges. If a bridge replacement alternative is selected such that a new bridge is built as part of this project, the city of Manashe would be the owner and maintainer of a future bridge after construction is complete. If alternative B was selected, which involves a rehabilitation, then the state would continue as the owner and maintainer of the bridge until such point as a new bridge is constructed. And again, that's based on state statute 8410. The city officials are aware of it, that we've dealt with the mayor and public works director, Mr. Radke, as well as Mr. Kyle, the community development section. So they have been made aware of that, but again, just getting into a little bit with that, we're looking to have an approved environmental document by the summer of 2016. Between the time that we would publish a draft environmental document and that final document or final approval, there would be the opportunity for a public hearing that would be presented, which would be if anyone has new issues or other issues with the preferred alternative and issues, impacts that are presented in the environmental document. Construction right now is currently scheduled to begin in the summer of 2020 on whichever preferred alternative is selected. Again, a rehabilitation looking to take one year and a new bridge would take two years of construction. So if a new bridge is selected as an alternative, you're looking at summer of 2022 or fall of '22 when a new bridge would be open to traffic. And again, if real estate is necessary under a replacement option, it would be likely that late 2017 is the timeframe that we'd be starting the real estate acquisition process. It's just some tentative milestone dates going forward with that. Again, not looking for any answers from the city tonight, just trying to put the alternatives out there and explain them as well as we can so that you have some time to review things and are in a better position to give a recommendation and make a decision on what the city preference would be. But certainly, I mean, we're here tonight, if you have questions initially, be happy to do the best we can to answer them or if there are any questions that come up, certainly be to now and at such time that you would consider at a future meeting, we can answer them certainly in that timeframe as well.
Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. Going back to alternative B, which is the bridge rehabilitation, what's the life expectancy with a bridge rehab? How many more years could we get out of it, understanding the savings that we as a city would realize on the maintenance, but the, I guess, the down the road problem of being out of a bridge twice?
Correct. Chuck, I think was reading your mind, he actually just pointed that out to me. That's one of the things I had that I was going to go over and forgot to, but under a rehabilitation, which is alternative B, and I believe it might even be on the slide, but you're looking at, I mean roughly a 30 to 40 year life expectancy for rehab. At that point, you would need to look at a complete replacement of the bridge. With a bridge replacement option, you're essentially looking at 75 to 80 year life expectancy for a complete new bridge that's out there. Within that overall lifespan, you would have some rehabilitation projects, but generally 75, 80 years is plus or minus what you're looking at for the total life of a new bridge.
And with the new bridge, you said rehab 20 to 25 years?
Plus or minus, yeah. And those are all approximate timeframes. Different bridges, I mean, perform differently and when you're able to program and budget for them certainly has an impact on that. I mean, I can tell you, and that's something that's in our note and on our website, but the bridge that's out there today is safe for vehicular traffic. I know when we mentioned that there's deficiencies, that's the first question we get, is it an issue from a safety standpoint? The existing bridge is safe for travel currently and we continue to inspect it to ensure that it remains safe, but the improvement project is programmed out in a timeframe that we really need to get either a rehabilitation or a replacement scheduled and construction in that timeframe to ensure that it continues to remain safe for vehicle travel.
And you threw some dollar amounts out for the other alternatives for alternative B.
Alternative B, I mean, it's a, I would, being is that it's a rehabilitation and again, some of the costs haven't been updated over the last six months for that. Rather than the other options, it was in the neighborhood probably of $10 million less than the, any of the replacement options that are being looked at. But significantly less cheaper certainly initially, but then you're not solving the width issue, the mariner boarding clearance issue initially, that's something that you live with until a complete replacement is constructed.
All right. Thank you very much.
And the other thing you forgot to mention, Bill, was the pedestrian and bicycle movements. If we rehab that bridge, we're stuck with what we have, which is not very safe for bikes and.
Correct. From the pedestrian and the width standpoint, when the width stays the same, I mean, obviously you force bicyclists to essentially either use sidewalk, which share with pedestrians or to use a narrow traveling across. Certainly on the north end in the northeast corner, the operator's house has been identified as a vision obstruction in that corner of the bridge. So from a site, safety, vision standpoint, that's something certainly that's been brought up to us and from field reviews, it's fairly obvious to see as well.
Alderman Taylor, you got some questions?
Yes. About the bridge ownership after it's done, the city would be on the hook in the future. Why is that? Because it's a state and federal waterway and why would the ownership be passed on to the burden be passed on to us in the future?
Yeah. And again, that's a state statute. I mean, it's something that would have to be changed at the state level. It's a statute that's existed and that we, that we have applied in our region previously in looking at, and again, there's Jackson Oregon Bridge that we're looking to start a study on in Oshkosh, same situation that's going to apply down there. I would encourage you to look up the statute to get familiar with it, but the statute is fairly clear when the new bridge is constructed, either on a local road or connecting highway, which essentially, same thing that the local municipality would have jurisdiction on it, that a reconstruction, after the reconstruction, the municipality would assume the ownership and future maintenance of the bridge.
Okay. You know, there is a difference in Oshkosh, it's a natural river. Where here, this is the, if you will, the entrance to a navigation, federal navigation canal and which there is a difference, I think, under that jurisdiction. How much federal dollars are involved with this project?
Federal dollars, I believe is 80% federal, 20% state. And again, at this point, there's no local cost involved, but depending on local preference and desires, there may end up being some local cost share. I mean, but at this point, it's 100% federal state dollars and 80% of that being federal at this point.
Okay. So to get that destination changed, what we probably have to do is, would that be on both levels, state and federal, that we wouldn't have the burden of paying for the bridge?
It's a state statute, I mean, that exists, so essentially on the state level is where it would have to be changed.
Okay. Thank you. Also, I'd like to thank Attorney Iverson speaking earlier on behalf of this group and Ms. Dable Taylor speaking. Just in a nutshell, this group has been very involved. They called a meeting of the DOT here on August 4th and it was a three hour meeting. They have great questions, they have great ideas and the impact to that, their homes is what really matters to them. And these different scenarios on here, A through H, have different impacts on their homes. And we all know that our home is where we go to recoup from our daily lives, from our work lives and from the world and to have a negative impact on these people in their home. If it's a roundabout with headlights flashing past your windows every couple of minutes or every, every multiple times per minute is a serious issue and to lose tax base on that end is a serious issue. My district represents part of the north side of that bridge and I believe that the people on each end of that bridge should have a say on what happens to that. The south side residents, if they're coming up with a scenario here that they want, I'd be happy to champion their cause and take that opportunity to make that happen for them, as I will with the residents on the north end of this bridge project. Thank you.
Just for the information for the council, we have started talking with both our state senators and representatives as well as the navigation authority regarding the statutes and the potential transfer of that bridge to the city. We haven't gotten very far yet, but we're discussing that. We're also discussing it with the other communities along the Fox River within the lock system that have similar situations with bridges within their communities to look at how we might accommodate the whole system and the operation of those bridges in the future. So it is something that we're looking at already. Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Taylor asked my question, but I'm going to ask it again because as far as the financing of a bridge, the city will pay $0, correct?
Currently, there's $0 city dollars involved in the construction. Again, if there's a lower preference or.
Right. So the extra $2 million would not matter to the city?
From the initial construction cost difference?
From, from, on alternative E, doesn't matter if that's what we choose, correct? It's $2 million more?
We would take, again, we would take that advisement under consideration. The DOT is ultimately responsible for making the decision, but any of the city preference as far as the alternative you have would certainly weigh heavily in our ultimate decision that we make.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that money's, money is not an issue here for the bridge. It's if we want something else. Another thing, I got a question for you. Can you put up, it doesn't matter, put up, put up F. Because I want to ask you, because I know Alderman Taylor, myself, Alderman Zelensky, and I know Alderman Nichols, she lives across the bridge, but I'll say it's not going to affect her as much, but here, you say this is gonna, I'll guarantee, because right now when the bridge comes up, the traffic stops back here because of the stoplights. They can't go any further. Now you're going to pull those stoplights out, okay? What's going to stop the cars from coming up to here? And if they do, there's never just one or two cars backed up. It goes back up to the second set of lights a lot. So these cars will be all the way to here, these cars won't be able to get through. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. And certainly there would need to be special signing and other things in advance of that. And all the signing is obviously, I mean, needs to be obeyed by the vehicular traffic out there. But again, roundabouts have worked very well. And again, you're talking about something from when the, during the time that the bridge is raised, the number of bridge raisings will be significantly reduced under a replacement option with an improved vertical clearance number one.
You're still going to have it. You're still going to have the bridge coming up. So another option, another question is, why do we have to have a roundabout downtown Manashe? How many other communities have roundabouts downtown?
Roundabouts are becoming more prevalent, certainly, I mean, within Wisconsin and nationwide. Oshkosh has roundabouts downtown, I can tell you that, in the Fox Valley. Appleton has them downtown in the Fox Valley, College Avenue.
Clear downtown, Appleton.
College Avenue Bridge.
Well, okay.
And looking within that, Mina has them downtown and if you're looking, depending what you classify as downtown that are out there, they do work, they work effectively out there. Again, they're an alternative that we're presenting. We have seen the benefits from a safety and operation standpoint. We've done a great deal of education. I can tell you, one of the best selling points that we have for roundabouts is actually getting roundabouts constructed, public opinion. There have been studies that have shown public opinion changes from pre-construction of a roundabout to after, essentially out on the Lees of Oregon. It done studies out in there where you're looking at a third of the people only favored roundabouts prior to construction. Five years or more after construction, you're looking at that essentially flip flop where two thirds of the public favored them. People had. People had drive-through them regularly, they're constructed downtown, near schools. There's very few areas where a roundabout can't function, function effectively, function well. I mean, that being said, we acknowledge that they're not the appropriate treatment for every situation.
Right.
But in a downtown area, they have functioned and they have functioned well.
So how many, Chief Stike, how many accidents have been on that intersection?
I don't have the exact numbers here.
Just a guess, I mean, just roughly, 20, 15?
It's been identified, oh, it's quite a few. The biggest problem that we have is with the grate, especially in adverse weather conditions. It's difficult for vehicles to stop there. And on the alternative as far as roundabouts, I have to agree with the DOT on it, we've seen that on 47. Since the opening of the roundabouts on 47, we've had one crash.
But it's out of town as well. I know, but that's out of town, it's not right downtown. I just wanted to point out, I'll guarantee that the backup will happen, so I live here.
Just want to add your question about, about roundabouts in downtown. Downtown DePere, east end of the bridge, has a multi-lane roundabout. Downtown Milwaukee, at Sixth Street, down by the post office, right in downtown Milwaukee, there's a hybrid, two-lane to one-lane roundabout down there. They do work in downtown areas, they're safe for traffic and safe for pedestrians. So if you need examples, specific locations, like, you know, Bill can get, mark all the locations, you can pull them up on Google and see where they're at, or if they're close by, like Nina or Appleton, take a drive, you know, we're more than happy to give you that information. But the department is, you know, as Bill mentioned, it's a tool in our toolbox when we look at, if a traffic signal is warranted, we look at both roundabouts and signals, because roundabouts have shown to be a lot safer. And that, and that's our number-one priority with the department is safety, and that, and most of the crashes that cause injuries happen at intersections. So that's one of our number-one concern is, is the safety at intersections.
Alderman Nichols, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, could you go back to alternative J, the number one? My first question, could you review the, this is the first time a lot of people are seeing this alternative. Could you review the traffic pattern on the north side of the bridge, how that would look?
Sure. And from the roundabout standpoint, similar to, I mean, alternative F, you'd have two southbound lanes on Racine approaching the roundabout. The outside lane would be center right turn lane to head east on Main Street. The inside lane would either continue, could either continue straight or slightly turn left and head down southbound on the bridge, or it could also be a U-turn maneuver to come back and head northbound. On the approach from Main Street, excuse, I believe I hear that right, this westbound traffic on the exit, but for eastbound Main Street, approaching the intersection, again, you'd have one lane, but you'd have two lanes that would break into a splitter island with a right turn bypass lane. So the lane that would continue to the inside here would go through the roundabout, proceed north on Racine. The right turn bypass lane would turn and head south across the bridge. And for northbound, coming across the bridge, then it would be a single-lane entrance. This lane could either continue north on Racine, continue through the roundabout to head west on Main Street, or again, could come back south as a U-turn across the bridge.
Thank you for that. Also, sticking with that alternative, property impacts to the homeowners on the south side of the bridge, could you address that issue?
There would be some, as shown in yellow, some right-of-way that would be required across the peninsula, just in the north of the Lawson Canal. The area for the Riverway properties, we have shifted this area, the new bridge, to the west in this area, such that there should not be any fee acquisition or takings that are necessary from the properties on Riverway. The area for the redevelopment of the R. Donnelly parcel, again, is being coordinated with the city on that, depending on the status of that redevelopment, whether it occurs before or after our project would impact certainly whether the fee takings and things that would occur within the R. Donnelly parcel. Otherwise, I mean, coming down, there would be likely some strip-taking, I mean, along the sidewalk on the south side, but nothing that would impact residential property within there. One of the things with this alternative, which is similar to alternative F, one of the earlier versions that we had shown of this roundabout, had restricted northbound traffic from Namet from turning west and entering into the roundabout. We did shift this roundabout slightly to the west. That opens up the left turn from northbound Namet to enter into the roundabout. So from a local street system, there's certainly better continuity than there was from some earlier versions that were shown at the first public meeting.
Yes, those of us on the south side of the bridge appreciate that immensely. Also, sticking with this alternative, you mentioned that the move, the portion of the movable bridge will be higher?
The movable bridge itself would be roughly the same elevation and same clearance within the movable span. The movable span is roughly 100 feet, but what we are looking to do is add a separate span just immediately south of that movable span, that would be roughly 30 feet. That would be a slab span that would have improved clearance of about three to four feet from what's existing out there today. And it's some, it's similar to what we've done on other movable bridges by providing a flanking span or a span immediately adjacent to the movable span with improved clearance.
Okay. How does, how would that affect, if I were traveling south over the bridge, how would that affect the slope heading towards the south side of the bridge?
For vehicle traffic?
Yeah.
For vehicle traffic, it has no effect.
Okay. That's good to know, because in the wintertime, it gets kind of tricky down there. And also, I know that some of the residents along Riverway have been in touch with you directly over their concerns, and this is the first time that they've heard and seen alternative J. Some of them are here this evening. And as we continue this process, I think you, the DOT, and yourself have demonstrated that you're very willing to work with all parties involved, including the different neighborhoods, and to approach things with an open mind. And going forward, I hope that the, the neighbors and all of the folks impacted by this project can continue to work towards solutions that are amenable to all those involved. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
While you have that up there, I just had two questions towards the south side, not the intersection, but before the intersection. Are we going to maintain the same bridge height on the Lawson Canal?
Very close to what's existing, and it hasn't been, whether it's a couple inches, I mean, up or down, that hasn't been determined, but very close to existing, and we will look to make it no worse than what it is today.
Okay. And would we be removing the, the bridge structure that's in the middle of that canal?
Yes, any of the existing, now, the existing Racine Street Bridge, yes, would be removed. Also, there's a separate access bridge that's underneath the pointer right there that would also be removed as, as part of the project. We have talked to the city, again, in getting back into the R. Donnelly parcel and redevelopment, that there is some plans to have an access to the peninsula, to the west, actually, of what our display covers out there. So that would be something, certainly, in conjunction going forward, that we would continue coordination and talks with the city on.
That little bridge is, it was a city street called the Curtis Reed Plaza Bridge, and would the state be picking up the costs of that, if that small bridge where the peninsula was moved to the west?
At this point, it's to be determined. We haven't gotten any of the discussion on the funding aspect of a new bridge to the west of the display yet.
Okay. Is that, since we're, if we would lose access because of this, the bridge changing at the bottom, is that something the state generally picks up?
And I, I wouldn't be in a position to comment definitively tonight, but again, it would be something that we would be, I mean, open a discussion with, I mean, with the city officials on that.
Because it's certainly a necessity for the trail system that we've had invested in with the Gilbert property and with the R. Donnelly property, is certainly the taxpayers have put a lot of dollars into those projects. And I, I understand that the development this time with both properties is not firmed up, but certainly, we have, we have concerns with that in the future. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
One more thing. Will you be posting the alternative J, one and two, on the website?
Yes, we will. We'll get them up as soon as possible. I mean, we've also added some traffic arrows, and it's tough to see on, on any of these smaller displays, but if you would zoom in, there are some traffic arrows in the roundabouts that have also been added to the alternatives for F as well, and H. So even though F and H haven't changed, they have had traffic arrows added, and those updated displays will be posted on the website for those as well.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Zelensky?
Thank you. What's the minimum height you need on the US government canal there for, if we decided not to go with the opening span?
For a fixed bridge?
Yes.
It would depend certainly on constrained vehicles, I'm using the area in coordination with the US Coast Guard out there on it. I don't have that with me, I mean, tonight for this specific location, that's something, I mean, certainly, we could find out.
I'd like to find out what, what the minimum is, and where, how short we, are we at this point? And if we could move that bridge further back into...
The issue with moving, and if you're looking at moving the navigation channel, I mean, it's on the north end right now, to match up with the US government canal, and also because of the current, and around the bend in that area, I mean, it's, it's at the north end or north crossing there for a reason.
On the north end, I'm fine with that, but what about the south end with the Bonta building? Could you wind this bridge around further and build a bridge that we do not have to have an openable part on it? And how much?
On the south end, there would not, the only navigation or movable span is on the north end.
Yes, but we could raise, I don't know if you considered dredging any point of this canal or this river?
And, I'm not sure if you're...
And raising the bridge?
Raising the bridge would have, from an impact standpoint, we looked at, looking at what a fixed bridge would need to have, and the fact that it's on the north end, from a profile standpoint, you need the critical, the most clearance at the north end, which is adjacent to the north shore. So you'd be impacting basically the entire north edge of the property there, and significantly. It wouldn't just be the dentist office, you're looking at a wide range of impact and extending significantly beyond Broad Street, and before we could touchdown, so I may not have that displayed here tonight, but...
Yes. I'm just looking forward for a future replacement of this bridge. We're a very small community, and if we have to replace a bridge at some point, there's a lot of things they got to give.
Just for example, the fixed bridge up in DePere and Kekana, the minimum there was 26 feet above the water to the low end of the steel or...
And we're at what now?
And that, right now, the bascule span is what?
I believe you're looking at about six to seven feet, I mean, right now with the bascule span.
Okay. That's a big, big difference. Was there any talk of acquisition of property on the other side of the street? And who are the willing partners here? I don't know, between the properties on the east side of the street and another option for the bridge.
Are you talking about the west side?
The west side.
Okay. And again, I touched on that at the start, and that I'm looking at, from the west side, we did have an early look at what could be done. The dam being on the west side adds complexity, difficulty in cost associated with that, as well as safety issues. The Faith Technologies development on the west side also is somewhat primitive from a cost standpoint as far as the impact, and that was one of the earliest constraints or issues, again, identified with that original stakeholder group.
Okay. And on the lighting issue of the cars, I hope you take into consideration that a lot of these cars are not standard. I live a block and a half to the east of that bridge, and it lights up the backyard when cars are coming across down, coming through downtown. So I know you take the standard car, what the manufacturers recommend, but that's not the case anymore with cars. People are altering them, and they're lighting up the backyards two blocks down the, or up the river. So I hope you take that into consideration.
That has been factored in the other discussion we have had with respect to lighting, whether a roundabout or a traffic signal, I mean, under a new location is looked at on the, on the north shore, there is some green space that would be available for either for landscaping or a boom or something, as well between ultimately the Racine Street roadway and the condominium property or any other Broad Street residents.
Okay, what do you do for noise barriers? Because it seems to be that cars are, cars and motorcycles are constantly getting louder and louder, or more of them.
For this specific instance, there would not be noise barriers constructed. I mean, that, it wouldn't be, or to be technically feasible in order to get the noise reduction necessary. So I can tell you that noise barriers would not be constructed in the project, and the other thing with noise barriers, from an aesthetic standpoint, with the importance of the views that's been identified in this area from, again, the stakeholder group and local citizens, the noise barriers would certainly work against that as well, but...
Okay, thank you. Is there more maintenance with the lightweight concrete on the movable part of the bridge than...
I don't have the cost comparison as far as long-term or maintenance cost. I can tell you, our Northeast Region or DOT Bridge Maintenance Unit likes the lightweight concrete and how it's performed up in Maple, Oregon, and Sturgeon Bay. But again, we have, I guess you can say, limited experience to the Sturgeon Bay situation. Just want to tell more of them are built, I don't know that there's a long history of that on it, but our, our region bridge unit likes them and how it's performing up in Sturgeon Bay.
How long have they been out, the lightweight concrete?
I'm not sure when the Sturgeon Bay Bridge was built. Downtown Green Bay on the Nitschke Bridge, that was back in early 2000s, that has lightweight concrete on it, so that's probably at least 10 to 15-year-old, 15-years-old already. And that, the one thing with the concrete deck versus the open steel grate is it's less wear and tear from the salt dripping down through onto the machinery of the lift bridge. That's what the issue is with the current bridge, is you have an open deck and all the salt and snow gets down through there, and it's rusting out a lot of the equipment down in there. But the closed concrete deck, it's a light, it, it's concrete, all it is, is it's a different aggregate in there, that's why it's lightweight, instead of being 150 pounds a cubic foot, it's a little bit less, so there's less weight that has to be lifted on the bridge, but it's still concrete.
Okay. Which one's safer for the steeper slopes?
That's probably a matter of opinion, because concrete, you'll have it time, but concrete smoothes out over time, that's why you end up redecking or deck, overlaying a bridge after 20 years is to refinish that there, and also get rid of some of the concrete that has become unsound. The steel also wears down, but it's a little bit more rougher because of the open grates, so, you know, it's, it's a horse apiece, I guess, would be my response to that question, Alderman.
Because I slid through both of them, so, but if you're the first one at the maintenance, before they start salting or whatever, it's dangerous.
We live in Wisconsin, so we got to slow down for the conditions when they're not prime conditions for driving.
I know, I just want to know if you know any accident reports on one versus the other.
I think it's all project location, because the grades are different on each one of these bridges that we have, so you got to find apples to apples to compare.
Okay, well, there must be some data out there about what, what the difference is on the existing bridges, and what changed from when they went from steel grate to concrete if the accident rate changed?
We can look in there, I don't know if there is going to be much of a change between the two at each individual location and that, so...
Thank you.
Looks like we've run out of questions. So thank you for coming this evening, Bill and Chuck. If you have other questions, they're both available by email. You can email questions or email them to the Public Works Director, and we'd be happy to get those off to them. And I don't know if you have your email card with you?
I have a card with me that I can supply, yes.
Yeah, otherwise Mark would be happy to forward them for you to do that. But thank you for coming, and we will be in touch in the next couple of meetings then to discuss this a little bit further.
Mayor Mayes? Oh. I want to thank Bill and Chuck for coming tonight and also to make one comment on their responsiveness to previous concerns. We've looked at one on the south side with the Namet Street left turn that we felt was critical, that you needed to be able to turn left off of Namet onto Kaiser's, and they did revise their design to allow that. And then on the north side, looking at Alternative J, as a result of hearing some comments at the second PIM meeting, I think that they have been responsive in that regard and their willingness to meet with any group, any neighborhood group, any other group that has specific concerns. They have indicated that willingness to meet with them as they have done with the condo slash Broad Street. So the same would apply to any other neighborhood group. So I wanted to thank them for that.
Great. Thanks again. Alderman Nichols, would you mind turning the lights on for us? I guess Al's going to. Okay. Okay. We are on item G, and we have the minutes and communications to receive this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive minutes A through E and communications F through M.
So motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion of any of the items? Alderman Taylor? Oh, go ahead, Alderman.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Looking at item M, I just had a question. I know this was a budgeted item last year and helped me out here. It was 30-some thousand dollars.
Well, for the budget year 2015, we saved another, we budgeted another $10,000, but the last few years we've been saving, and it was $36,000, and then including 2015, we now have $46,000.
Okay. $46,000. Okay. I'm, you know, we're looking at some dollars here tonight, and we do have adequate machines, and the machines tend to change as technology does as we move forward, and then machines are obsolete. And I'm just wondering if this would be an opportunity to save almost $50,000 on our new fire truck and put this money towards that since it is basically an emergency situation here. And it would help reduce the burden on the taxpayers and the interest that the money we have to borrow for this. So just looking at other options here throughout our budget, this item is up here, and it's an opportunity. And we'll have to, as technology presents itself, we'll have to move forward with machines. But I think the machines we have are adequate at this time, and it's my opinion on it, and I don't know if we'll have to make that adjustment at some point, but it's just an option I've thrown out there for the council.
Any other further discussion?
Yep.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Clerk Galiyazi, just to go with Alderman Taylor, on the machines we have now, I know they're old, but are they still working or are they some failing or...
There are some that are having problems, and what we're running into is because these machines are 20 years old. They were first purchased by the city in 1995. They were first used in 1996, and they've been used for roughly six elections every election cycle, which an election cycle is every two years. So over the last 20 years, well, do the math, how many times they've been used, they've been moved around, there are no more parts available from the manufacturer.
Okay. So if one goes?
If one goes, I've got, I don't have parts. They cannot provide parts from the manufacturer. Now, that's happened like the last, three years ago, we were told from the manufacturer that they do not have the parts for this type of equipment, for the optic scan.
For the ones we have?
Yes.
So, but for the new ones, of course.
Right. And they stopped, they actually, that company stopped making the optic scan, which you would consider the paper ballot, you know, most people consider the paper ballot. They stopped making that machine three years ago. And so when you go, I can't even buy any new machines from them at that type. The what we're looking at right now, that is their new machine, which, as you can see, it's an all-in-one machine. It is a tabulator for paper ballot, and it also is ADA compliant in accordance with state statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Clerk Galiyazi, do we have any reserved machines or is this all we have out there for our frontline use?
Are these the current machines you're asking about? Yes, that, I don't have any reserved. I've got, I have six machines. We have five polling places, and my spare machine is acting up.
Okay.
I haven't been able, really, I have not been able to use it, and I have not used it for over a year because it's not acting, it, you know, wasn't acting properly.
Doesn't count the ballots or doesn't...
Oh, it counts the ballots. That, you know, there's no problem with that, but what happens is the ballots will get stuck. There's rollers inside, and when they pull the paper ballot through, those rollers are so worn that they don't pull them all the way through, so then there's a jam. So then the poll workers have to turn everything down, and then they have to pull out, you know, the ballot, and then they have to look to see, did it counted? Did it counted? They can look on the little tabulator. And you talk about, you know, technology, 20 years is a long time for technology.
And also, I know at my polling place, we have a new digital machine. Do we have those at each polling place?
Yes, those are the touchscreen, the TSX machines, which we call the touchscreen. Those machines we started using in 2006. And those we started using because of the Hava Law that was passed in 2002, that everybody has to have an opportunity to vote, whether, whatever their disability is. This new machine combines both machines in one, so you'd only have one machine at the polling place. You no longer have that as a touchscreen option. It's for those people that do have a disability that need extra help.
Okay. So we do have a backup from the machine that has, you put the ballot in and the rollers go in. The other one at each polling place would be the digital machine. Is that correct?
The, right now, what, okay, so right now what you have is the optic scan, which is the paper ballot.
Yes.
And then you also have your touchscreen. And so when the poll workers set up, they're setting up two machines. This new one, they would be setting up one machine, but would be combined, would have that.
Okay. So with the new machine, is that the only one we're going to have there, or is there going to be a backup at the polling place too? Let's say we bought a machine for each polling place?
Yes.
Okay, a new one. Are we still having other machines there for backups, these optical ones or whatever?
No, because those would no longer be used because the county provides me with a memory card for, one memory card for each machine, for each polling place.
So the 2006 machines, we're going to take those, we're not going to use them anymore?
No.
Now, that's nine years that the use of that machine, that's not too long. Okay. Thank you.
Oops.
It works.
Hey.
I thought you'd shut it off.
I can do that if you'd like. Shall we try that? There you go. There you go. Let Dan turn it back on.
Park and Rec Director, item C, there was a lengthy discussion on Wince Park at the Park and Rec Board meeting. I was there since I'm on that committee. Can you briefly touch for the public on what the issues are with Wince Park and how going forward and where we could move these amenities if we do shut it down?
Well, the bottom line that came out of the Park and Rec Board meeting was by, our December meeting, the board would like to make a decision on what to do with Wince Park. We've been discussing that park on and off for the last couple of years. The surface on top of that park is not a good recreational surface anymore, and so we've been debating what to do with that service, surface, and what to do about the lost recreational amenities. We have a basketball court and two tennis courts and also another half-court, basketball court, about 30,000 square feet up there. And so we really, we want to get into a process where we're getting a public survey out. We want to invite the neighbors to our next, perhaps not the next meeting, but sometime between now and December, we're going to invite the public again. We actually did that last year and had very minimal turnout at that meeting, but we're also in discussions with the utilities because they want an answer there, because they want to know for budget purposes what to do with that surface. And if it's not a recreation surface anymore, then they are exploring alternatives in pricing to put an impervious surface on top of that, and recreation would no longer be up on top of Wince Park. So I don't know. Alderman Zalinski, if there's anything else you want to touch on there?
Well, a lot of this discussion then hinged on the park study for Jefferson Park. When would this be complete? So if we were going to turn, shut down that park, we would have to move the basketball court somewhere because there are people that use that, and which park would we move them to?
Well, you're right. That did come up in the meeting, a couple of alternatives. There's a little bit of a green space where the water tower was. Utilities has informally sort of offered us that green space as a potential small park. The Jefferson Park area has some potential, you know, for basketball and tennis and that kind of thing. There's lots of options that are sort of on the table once we do begin that process, and that's something that we need to talk about as a staff as to when we want to get a start on that. I guess we've all, we've kind of talked internally, we need to sort of clear our plates a little bit and make sure that once we embark on that process that we see it through to its conclusion. I don't think any of us want to go into it without being fully committed to doing it, so we just haven't gotten to that point yet.
It's been talked about for three years now. I think we could find some time to start discussing these local parks here and, because we have that neighborhood park, neighborhood community discussing this, and they want to bring some questions forward to the council on the Jefferson Park. So I think we better find some time to get this neighborhood park worked out if they want to start shutting one down sooner than later, because if the utilities wants to take over all control of that or whatever, or vice versa, if we want to maintain it, because we're here that it's bad conditions now, but we haven't maintained it in 20 years. So that's the problem. If we're going to move basketball courts somewhere, they're going to be concrete, and we're going to have to maintain those also. So just hope we get this park committee together and get some of this stuff ironed out for future Park and Rec, because there isn't much in that area other than Jefferson Park, but there are no other places to play basketball other than Hart Park. Thank you.
As we're moving forward that project as well, we need to, that's one of our key neighborhoods that we're working on revitalization, and to basically abandon that industrial structure in the middle of a neighborhood could be detrimental for the neighborhood as well. So we need to be careful that we're not leaving some industrial relic stuck in the middle of a residential neighborhood if we don't use it for residential, I mean, for recreational purposes. So that's one of the other things that Brian and I have been discussing quite a bit, is if it's not a park, what is it and how do we make it fit with the neighborhood and not become a detriment to the neighborhood? Alderman Taylor?
On the same topic, Director Tungate, I was asked by the public who put up the security cameras at Wince Park and what is the purpose of them? I understand they're for security, but is it the utility or is it the park?
I just heard that at our last meeting. I believe it's utilities out of the camera there.
All right. Thank you. And also, I'm in favor too of moving forward with this, you know, as you see with this bridge, when you involve neighbors and what the mayor had just said, you have to be careful about the impacts, and the sooner we start on this Jefferson Park comprehensive plan, the better. We get to flush out problems, we get to look at what the needs are, and the sooner we start, the better. And over the course of a long period of time, rather than compressing it and trying to make some decisions real quick, the more people we involve, the more neighbors we involve, the more the community, the better off this plan is going to be. So I'm in favor of, at some point, starting this, starting this process. Thank you.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, I agree with Alderman Zalinski and Taylor. $50,000 or $130,000 to redo that, heck of a lot of money, and we don't even know if we're going to put a basketball court in the new Jefferson Park. So if we would do this, redo the Wince Park, we sure as heck can't put a basketball court in Jefferson Park. Now you've got two basketball courts within three blocks of each other. That makes absolutely no sense. So I'm in favor of not going forward with Wince Park. We need to look at Jefferson Park and what we're going to do with that and if we're going to install a basketball court in that new concept also before we look at this. Thank you.
Any improvements for any of the parks that come before you on the budget as well as part of the CIP? So nothing will kind of get slid underneath the table and happen.
Okay.
Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor of accepting the minutes and communications?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda this evening has a lot of items. The first item is the minutes to approve from the Common Council of August 3. The Administration Committee recommendations that the Health Department enter into an inter-agency memorandum of understanding to purchase Port Account Pro Respiratory Fit Tester with Manitowoc County Health Department. That the Board of Public Works recommends the approval of the street use application for the Labor Day Parade on September 7. A change order for Yankee General Contractors for the Riverfront Trail of $6,011. That we approve a change order for Yankee General Contractors for the Gilbert Trestle Improvements for $20,125. That we approve a payment for Yankee General Contractors for the Gilbert Riverfront Trail in the amount of $100,182.94. And that we approve a payment to Yankee General Contractors for the Gilbert Trestle Improvements for $5,550.50. That we approve a payment for Northeast Asphalt for new street construction and reconstruction in the amount of $93,793.83. And that we approve an agreement with Appleton regarding the Midway Road and Southfield Drive intersection reconfiguration. And that we accept the Plan Commission recommendations of a grant of a utility easement to Minash Utilities behind 163, 165, and 167 Main Street, subject to the review by the city attorney. That we grant a utility easement to Minash Utilities in the Broad Street parking lot, subject to the review by the city attorney. That we acquire... acquire, that, yeah, that there's an acquisition, all or part of 320 Shoot Street, and for the acquisition of land from Woodlands Development LLC, as contemplated in the development agreement between the City of Manasha and Woodlands Development LLC, approved on August 3. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Taylor?
Five, nine, and 12.
Does anyone have any other items that they would like separated? In the case of item 12, all that we're doing is accepting, well, we'll do the motion first, and then I'll explain what we're accepting there. Is there a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, and 13? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve as read by you.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Do we have a motion for item 5, the change order for Yankee General Contractors on the Gilbert Trestle Improvements?
Mr. Mayor, for the sake of discussion, I wonder if Director Radke could, I know last week at Public Works, if you could repeat what the change order was for, for the public?
This change order was for adding cable railing along the concrete trail that is east of the trestle portion of the trail. We wanted to continue that same type of railing extending to the east because of what we thought was a potentially hazardous situation with the, with the gabion walls, which are, it's a sheer wall down to the water. It's got to be, it varies in heights, but close to 10 feet in some parts, if not more. So it's protecting the users of that trail, and we felt that. We wanted to continue the same type of cable railing system that exists on the trestle, and that we have a unit price for, so there was no negotiating on that price.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for a change order, Yankee General Contractors, Gilbert Trestle Improvements, contract number 2014-04, at $20,125, change order number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Do we have a motion for item 9, the agreement with Appleton regarding Midway Road and Southfield Drive intersection? Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion for the agreement with Appleton regarding Midway Road, Southfield Drive intersection reconfiguration, as recommended by the Plan Commission.
That was recommended by Board of Public Works, actually. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, a member of the public, Ms. Dable-Taylor, had mentioned concerns with this item on the agenda. Was this a budgeted item? Can we explain that?
This would be in next year's budget?
In next year's budget.
So by doing this, you're asking me to put this in next year's budget?
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
So, item 12 is the acquisition of all or part of 320 Shoot Street. This item, all you're doing is affirming that the Plan Commission has recommended that. You're not actually acquiring it. That would be in the closed session item at the end of the council meeting, where we would talk about the actual acquisition.
Thank you.
So, I don't even know if we need action on this at all. So we don't need any action on this, unless someone would like to take action. Seeing none, we'll move on to action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for August 6 through 13. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 8/6/15 to 8/13/15, in the amount of $3,734,345.55.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Item 2 is the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 17 licensing period. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period, as listed on the police department's memo dated August 12, 2015.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Item 3, if there's no objection, I'm going to, we'll discuss that as action item 1 under Q. We'll move on to held over business. The first item is the purchase of a Saber 2854574 from Pierce Manufacturing. Is there a motion? I'm sorry. Alderman Better?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would like to make a motion for the purchase of the Saber 28574 from Pierce Manufacturing for $387,000, with an additional $20,000 for equipment, for a total cost of $407,000. Each city finance director shall give information to their respective common council on funding sources available for each of their cities for this unbudgeted purchase prior to each common council's approval.
Oops, is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Chief Oxer for the additional information provided regarding the 2015 vehicle cycle rotation, and then the front line equipment flow chart. That's helpful in understanding the replacement schedule for these vehicles, or at least the proposed schedule. Plans often don't go as we, as we hope. Things change midstream. I do recall, though, that we, that the council expressed an interest in information regarding, more information regarding the cost of repairing this particular vehicle. Do you have more information to provide on that?
I had a conversation with Mayor Marcus this afternoon regarding that, and in keeping with that, it's pretty much, when I state, what I stated in the memo earlier on the repair costs, excuse me, were approximately $15,000 to $25,000. FANE, which deals directly with Red Power Diesel, is our maintenance facility for our diesel, for our trucks and the diesel engines. They have given me a invoice, or an estimate, for the $20,000, for $20,000 for definite repair of what's probably a damaged, damaged crankshaft and bearings. And this in turn really equates to what other diesel mechanics, Mark Ebbell from Pierce, has given us, along with some other discussions with diesel mechanics at various suppliers in, or various repair shops in the area. They, it was consistent with the $15,000 to $25,000 figure. And I, if I, I didn't get quotes from all them, but I do know that this is a price that's good till the middle of October for FANE, as far as costs associated with the repair of, and the diesel engine on Pumper 35.
And are they firm in that estimation?
This is an estimate, that's all it is. There is, if there is additional damage bound to, this is to repair the, and replace with a rebuilt engine at this time. And that does not ensure us repair of a couple other smaller, but still significant items on the turntable, and some other issues that may happen as a result of the engine replacement. It doesn't guarantee that that would be the final number. That's just the engine cost.
Okay. And approximately, how many dollars are left in your repair account for this budget?
Very little, because this truck did get some money, again, we put some good money before bad. In that, we did make some repairs to this engine that were significant, and we've had some additional costs as a result of DOT inspections on the other vehicles that we've had. So there's very little left in this year's budget already, less than $1,000.
Okay. And at the cost of $15,000 to $25,000, what additional life expectancy might you expect out of this vehicle, which is already a second-line vehicle?
It's really, what I've said before, is that the life expectancy of a fire engine or a fire truck is approximately, they recommend that this vehicle be taken out of service with 25 years of age. And that's pretty much the standard throughout all, most of the fire departments, full-time, a larger volunteer, larger paid-on-call. The 25 years is the maximum that people will run their engines to, and they'll be replaced at that life, that life expectancy. In 25 years, this vehicle is 24 years old, and going in, it's 25 years. So this has got to the point where there are significant issues. If we start to replace things now, even an engine, there's still a transmission, there's still electrical components, there's still a lot of our things in this vehicle that there could be potential problems with down the road, especially if we looked at replacing this thing in 2017 anyhow. So I wouldn't say that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hazard a guess on the life expectancy if we did the engine. I wouldn't even try to speculate that.
Thank you.
Alderman Zelinski?
Thank you. Peggy, how are we going to write this check?
If this item is approved, the partner resolution going along with it would be number 6 under L, and that would be a budget adjustment for this purchase, and the recommendation would be to include it as part of the 2016 CAP borrowing.
Is there any preliminary budget put together yet, how this is going to affect going forward?
There is not. That's in progress.
Or how do we stand on our budget numbers currently?
This, this would be part of our borrowing for our CAP, and Director Sino and I have a goal of borrowing approximately a million dollars a year between this project and the project that we're looking at for, is it under Jerry Hayne, or what is it under here?
The Board of Public Works.
Oh, it's on the Board of Public Works. We would significantly exceed that, as well as the Twin Trestle Project. Am I missing one other one? It seems like I'm missing...
Those were the three, and then a potential additional deferred assessment.
So we would be exceeding that goal, so we'd have to look at juggling some other things, or exceeding that goal when we pull the budget out this fall.
Mr. Mayor, you had some issues with purchasing this truck, because you said there was going to be a purchase every year for the next three, four years. Did that problem get worked out?
I am concerned that we have a truck purchased last year, we'd have another truck purchased this year, and then a third truck purchased in 2017. I'm guessing the vast majority of us won't be here 20 or so years from now to deal with that.
Just a new guy.
But I don't really like creating problems for our predecessors, that we're grouping three very large-ticket items together within four years. If we have six vehicles, they should be spaced over that 25-year time span.
Are the bridge enhancements figured in there yet?
We don't have anything for bridges in there at this point.
I don't know. It's coming soon, too, sooner than you'd think. Fire, Police, Fire Chief Oxer, what happens if we don't replace this, and we stay at the status quo right now? Can we shift vehicles around anyway?
Right now, in the last two weeks, we've had three instances where we've relied on Appleton and Oshkosh to respond to fill our stations because of staffing and equipment to distribution. I don't think that they want to maintain that. What a reserve vehicle allows us to do is staff a vehicle and have our crews staff that vehicle and maintain proper coverage for our stations, as far as the districts that are involved where those stations are located. I don't, if we take the chance of, right now, we're actually running vehicles that need some repairs, and we keep those in service because of the position we're in right now. That's the, you roll the dice, and you try to, you know, make it work, and if you roll it, I don't know how it's going to shake out in the long run, but this is a necessary vehicle for us to maintain proper coverage for the citizens of Nina Manasha. It's essential for us to do proper emergency response.
How long did you have the rotation problem in this vehicle?
The rotation, I don't follow that.
Well, you said you can only turn to the right or something.
Oh, that's, that's not the drive shaft, that's the turntable. This is a, this is, that's come up pretty much recently, in the last two, three months. There's the ability to turn the table all the way around to get it in a position. You can't just go, you can't go one direction. So there is a problem with that. I don't know if, it's just something that, as a reserve vehicle, we knew that it did that, and that is something that potentially needs to be addressed.
Okay. What kind of significant motor work did you do on this vehicle recently?
I don't think it was motor work. I think it was mostly chassis and brake work. There were some problems with the suspension.
Okay. You said, you mentioned, I mentioned last couple of weeks ago about oil testing. Was there oil testing done on this vehicle?
Yes, there was.
Recently, or?
There was, we do oil testing on a regular basis of all, we send oil samples in regularly. I don't know what caused the oil to mix with, the water to mix with the oil in the crankies. I do not know at this time unless someone, unless we take it apart and look at it and try to make significant repairs and check it out that way.
I'd really be curious to what caused the problem. Is there any way of tracking this after we?
The vehicle is ours. If you want to spend money on looking into it, we can, but it's going to cost us to do that. Because like I said before, this is a very unique vehicle in that the culling is inside the cab, and the cab has to be lifted off this truck to get to the engine block and the heads on the engine. It has to be lifted, and that's the cost involved in that. I don't know that, I don't know where we're going to go with that.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, why don't we use our, why don't we use our, we have two certified mechanics at the city garage. Why don't we ever use them to look at these problems?
We use, we started using the certified mechanics at the NINA garage. We have, we're trying to work out a relationship with them to even more, do more detailed work with them at this time, but I don't think, I don't know if the city garage is even willing to or able to tackle the project of replacing an engine. I do not know that.
I wasn't asking that. I was just asking, you know, why, why we're not using either certified mechanics at Manasha or at NINA. That's what I was...
We do. We go to them and ask for them for advice as far as suspension work and the things that they can do in their facility.
Okay. At the Police and Fire Commission meeting, Mayor Crawford brought up an idea that his brother works at Seagraves up in Clintonville, and he said that, being that there's a Detroit, Detroit Diesel engine in this vehicle, that they have factory reps that come from Detroit Diesel to Seagraves every couple of weeks, he had said. And I made the motion that if we could have the Seagraves, or the Detroit Diesel reps, where they visit Seagraves, see if we could get them to stop down here in Manasha and look at this vehicle and give a recommendation. What has come out of that?
I've asked, Dean, Mayor Crawford has stated that he has his brother. I asked him for the information to get, to get in contact with the Detroit representatives, and I have not gotten that information yet. I would... I would contact them, and like I said, the vehicle is going to be ours. If there's something that we can do to repair it that's, they could find, I would still do that, and we might be able to salvage and sell this vehicle at that point. I don't think it changes the fact that this vehicle is getting old, and I think the replacement is inevitable somewhere down the road. So with that, I would still entertain Mayor Crawford giving me the information, and we'd move forward with trying to get the diesel mechanic to come in, but I, in talking with several other people, this is a very limited product. This diesel engine was, it was not used in commercial vehicles, it was primarily used in fire trucks. There's a very limited amount of parts and engines available with that regard, and I don't know that that would change with the information from the Detroit. That's the information I've gotten from several of the diesel mechanics that we've talked to regarding this engine.
I certainly hope we move forward with that. You know, the public likes to, to look at this as, that we've looked at all the different options that we have to, to see if we could maybe salvage this and get a better dollar on the, on the sale of this vehicle if it was to be fixed. I'm wondering if the Diesel Department at Fox Valley Technical College, boy, this would play right into their, their line of training out there if, if this, once this truck is permanently offline, if it could be, have them take a look at it. It'd be a great project for them.
I could contact them, but I, I know that there's probably, they'd expect the vehicle for probably nothing. Would they expect us to give it to them if they were going to use it themselves?
Oh, I wasn't talking about, I was having them look at it to estimate or fix the repairs.
Yeah, I don't know that it'd be any different than what we've talked about with, I mean, we can, I can ask, but I don't know that it'd be any different than us taking it to Red, or having Red Power or anyone else come and look at it right now. We know the problem as it exists right now and what effects that water in the crankcase has on the bearings and the crankshaft, and that's, that's going to dictate, like I said, replacing this with a rebuilt engine is what it amounts to.
So, we're back to the dollars, and how can your department help soften this non-budgetary item? What can your department do for us? It's, we're eight months into the year, and have you looked at some projects or options in your budget that you can help soften this emergency replacement?
There's very limited dollars that are available as far as operating dollars. Most of the budget is personnel and across the fringes, benefits, and things like that. So there's very limited dollars as far as that we'd be able to try to offset something of this nature.
Have you looked at that?
The one thing that's out there is, as far as replacing a deputy chief, we've, we haven't replaced him for about four months. There's some savings as far as fringes and salaries there. Early in the year, we didn't replace a firefighter for a month. There's some, there's some salary benefits there that we've been able to benefit from as far as the replacement, the time of replacement or rehiring of individuals. There's some money there, but I don't think it's significant enough to offset the costs of this engine.
So there's a deputy chief, and we could put that off to the first of the year, that hiring, and we would save that benefits and salary on that, and then you said there's a, another firefighter, but certainly don't want to be shorthanded on that end. But on, on the management end of it, we probably could split those duties for a while and that money into some savings. That must be, I would think, forty, fifty thousand.
You have to remember though, that's still split on a sixty, forty percentage, so forty percent of sixty thousand dollars is going to be, what, twenty-four thousand dollars? I, I don't know, like I said, I don't know that I can make a significant amount up to offset the cost. I don't think I can.
Certainly twenty, twenty-five thousand is a lot of money to the city, and, you know, if we find some dollars elsewhere to help offset this at this time, I think, you know, we have to make adjustments when these things happen. These are large-ticket items, and some things have to go to the side, and I guess that's our job to figure that out. Also, I've said this before up here, and I don't mean to, I'm not being critical to the company, but we had a major breakdown of a very expensive vehicle last year, almost nine-hundred thousand dollars. And in this letter written to us by Assistant Chief Sippan, he states here that several options exist to address the major engine issue that has plagued this truck. And we keep buying the same vehicles, and now we're in the, to the second time that we've had major failure in two years, and I'm thinking, sometimes we should think outside the box. I've owned Chrysler products my life, I've owned different GM products. I found that Buicks tend to, myself, stand up and hold their value a lot better, and I try to bring that to the table here, that maybe this particular manufacturer, we need to try something different. We have the specifications here that are listed, and other factories do meet those specifications, and with two, two failures here, maybe we need to start looking outside that. So, just a thought to consider.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Ocksher, I'm going to go back to two weeks ago when we talked about the number of years, and now you're saying that a fire engine should last twenty years and then plus five years reserve?
That's, NFPA gives us that alternative, but the thing, when you run your engines that long, you get to a point where they aren't worth anything at the, excuse me, when there's no value to them at the end. So you lose something there. I can't say what it is, probably forty, thirty to fifty thousand dollars. So you lose that option to get that money back out of a vehicle that you could replace with some life on it yet and utilize that money.
Yeah, about twenty years, because I'm just looking at the total years of service. We got one at nineteen years. Well, that's six years short of twenty-five.
Well, that one's, I think that one's still online though, right?
Yeah, but, well, you're, it's from Chief Sippan that's put this together on when you're going to replace your vehicles, so.
The Truck Committee put it together, and they, they were very.
Also, we got to go by, right?
They were very aggressive in doing that. I think if we, if I brought this to the Joint Finance and Personnel Committee for NINA National Fire Rescue, there are definitely options available in doing that. I mean, that's, it's, it's something, it's a starting point.
Okay.
Is what it is. Now, to say we have to, I mean.
Go by that.
It's the same thing as when we push the trucks back, because of budget constraints and everything else, we push the trucks back. I'm not going to say that, this wouldn't be the ideal situation, but it certainly is not the one that's etched in stone.
Okay, all right. To go back in history, and my end result will explain why I want to do this. When did the fire department start going to EMS calls?
I would have to say that was about twelve, fourteen, maybe fifteen years ago.
Okay, and Chief Steicher, the police do not respond to EMS calls at all?
No, we do.
You do?
Hmm.
Okay. You know, I did some homework, I called 911 even, talked to a fellow named Brian there to get some information, and I get where, in the, in the report here, and I'm kind of with Alderman Taylor, I mean, in the long haul, it'd be cheaper, but I think we're going to, we would have to hire more fired, police firefighters, because if we go to SUVs, then we have to man those, correct? And we would probably have to hire more fired?
No, I don't know that you'd have to hire more, but you'd have to definitely reorganize your response abilities with the, with the personnel that are available.
Okay. The reason I'm going with this is because I'm going to come out and say this, that I really shouldn't be sitting here tonight. I should be there six feet under or ground up. So at the end of July, I called 911, and because of my, they think because of my size of my body and the strength of my heart, that's why I survived. And the paramedics came, the fire department came, no police, and they came with their light sirens on. And, and I agree with Alderman Taylor, a couple of weeks back, we was talking about, the firefighters, they didn't do anything, you know, as the, the ambulance, the, you know, the ambulance people that, what did the firefighters do? Because I'll be honest with you, Chief, the police go to responded and let that fire truck in, in the station to respond to my need. And I called 911, talked to this person, and asked them how they decide, and they have protocol on how they dispatch, you know, for depending on situations, and in my situation, I really don't think a fire truck should have been dispatched.
I, I know that when we did the study, Chief Randerweiss was the chief at that time, and there were response time issues that Gold Cross has in several areas of both communities, and it was decided that would be enhanced by the fire department with their EMR or EMS, at that time, the EMS service available, that they have the skill level and the certification to provide EMS care, emergency medical service care. And with that, I'd say that there's several, I can look in my file and find thank yous of people that have been involved exactly the opposite of you, where the fire department was there and made a difference in saving their lives.
Well, I agree, but there's a protocol that this 911 operator set is, because I said, how did, how did the fire department and the ambulance get dispatched for my need? You know, where, I'm just kind of going with Alderman Taylor, what he said, you know, SUVs, even if you buy five of them, they're going to be cheaper than a fire truck, one fire truck, you know, and loading them up with everything is still going to be cheaper than one fire truck. So I was just, I wanted to mention that because in my situation, you know, the, so, you know, and that's why I was wondering why, when the fire department decided to go on EMS calls? Because who did it before that? Just the police and the ambulance?
Correct. I, I guess just to, to fill in the gap a little bit more, we have different roles and responsibilities at an EMS call. Police department generally goes, but it's more in a safety, security sense for both the firefighters and the paramedics, because there's more things that are going on in EMS call than just the patient care. There can be other things as far as the other family members, you know, if they're upset about what's going on in the house. With the fire department's role, while sometimes it might look as a side role because they are less medically trained than the paramedics, it may just be that extra set of hands that might be holding an IV bag, grabbing the cot, doing some of those other tasks. So I guess there are three different groups kind of attacking the, the problem at that house, kind of in different ways, but working in a coordinated effort to provide the best care for that patient at that given time. So I'm not sure if that helps kind of under, explain where it does. Now, whether or not that's needed with three people on a truck or them doing with an SUV-type vehicle, I know that they did include some information in the package previously as to what the pluses and minuses.
Yep, so I don't know if we could go back to that, but I just wanted to mention that, that, you know, my, when we started the fire department, and I just wanted to mention my situation, so. Because I remember Alderman Taylor, and I'm kind of was like, well, yeah, why couldn't we do that? Because there are some cities that do that, and it is working for them.
They have large, they have staffing that allows them to do that.
They have staffing, correct.
Right.
All right, thank you.
So, so we're getting a little off topic. I guess, well, yeah, the things that we, the thing that we need to decide on this evening is, are we going to purchase a new truck or are we going to repair the existing truck? Those are kind of our two options. We can't just sit here and limbo and let, well, that's not what's on the agenda though. So we need to decide if we want to purchase a new truck or, or we can, or we can table it too, but we can't continue to rely on Appleton and Oshkosh for a long.
You need your own way of information that I need to know.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll just shut up and leave.
I'm.
Why talk? I mean, just a woke green light every single day and time, right, Sandra?
I'm sorry, Merk, I didn't, it's not that I don't want you to get information, but we do need to stay what's on the agenda too. And if you want, if you want to table it and, and talk about that, yes, we can put that on the next agenda. Alderman Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, this will be one question, I'll lead into another, but what's the status of NINA in this, at this point? Has this gone to their council yet?
Yes, it has.
Is it approved?
Yes.
If we don't approve this, where does this put our relationship with this, with this engine?
I, I'm not going to predict that. I know that we've often talked about if there was a difference of the two communities, it stayed status quo, and we, you know, that's.
So we'd end up fixing an engine at this point then, if we didn't approve it?
I.
Or some, somehow in that path, because you can't be without it. The mayor's right, we can't, we can't rely on other cities to do our job for us. We need to make the decision and own it.
I, I think the important thing to remember is the age of this vehicle here. I, I think we have to separate that, and this vehicle has served, it is a Pierce vehicle, it has served a full-life cycle, and I do think that it's important to look at that factor very seriously. This is an engine that's very old, and I, we thought we'd be able to keep it moving, but we haven't been able to. So I think that's key in trying to move forward with what we have in, in front of us tonight.
I understand that, I just wanted to make sure where we were with the NINA and Manasha Joint Fire Rescue. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Well, there's no doubt we can't operate without a truck, and certainly, I think, Mayor Crawford suggested that we try to maximize the sale of this used truck and have someone come down from Detroit Diesel and take a look at it, and, you know, it could be a head gasket, and there might not be any damage to the crankcase, and at that point, it's, you know, it's a minimal type of effects. If the engine is severely damaged, well, then we know what we have there. You know, we might have a nice piece for one of the parks or something, or, or the scrap price, you know, or to sell it to a museum or something. So we have some options out there, but we know that we have to serve the public the best, we have to have a truck, and I, I would like to see some budget cuts here that, for instance, like not, not replacing the, taking this money that the Assistant Chief, and not replacing that till the first of the year, taking that money, putting that towards the truck. And as I talked about earlier, there's forty-seven thousand, forty-six thousand dollars in our machines, we do have the electronic or the digital machine that's open from 2006. Do we need to take money from that right now for this, for this? And I don't know if there's, if the mayor and if our finance director have, have looked at any other options out here. Do we have any, I had mentioned last meeting that we had some street dollars, but apparently that borrowing, that those street dollars can't be used for anything, but streets even though, the truck does go down the street, but we can't shift those, those dollars. So I guess what I'm looking here is from the mayor or Director Sino, that what other options have we looked at in the budget, Mayor? And I'll ask for unanimous consent to hear from you.
The, we have not looked for other departments to forsake their budget items to pay for the fire truck, no. I think it would be a bad idea to not replace, we're talking a twenty-five-year-old fire truck, while we're also talking twenty-year-old election equipment. We're going to end up in the same spot with Debbie at her election if we don't.
But we do have the 2006 machines at every.
But that's only one machine at each place.
But we do have a backup, and we do have the 2006 machines at every polling place.
That, that's.
Correct, correct.
That can only be used by one person at a time though. That can only be used by one person at a time, though. The other machine can be used by eight people at a time.
But we do have that capability, correct?
Yes, but we'd be out the door for miles.
For the 2000, November of 2015 election, one election.
There is no more elections this year?
There is no more this year. So we, till next February for the primary probably? Okay. So we even have that option to, you know, look at the...
But if we'd have to put it into the 16 budget, we're, we're not coming out ahead.
Okay.
So unless there's something that we want to forego in the 15 budget, and there's not a lot of items left in the 15 budget that are major items, we purchased most of those items already this year.
But it's the fire department, not hiring that position till the end of the year. We've done that a lot with, we've gone with many police officers for many years up here that we haven't replaced at times, and other employees, Park, Public Works. Can we use that to...
We, we could, but did we ever give direction at the council level, at both councils, to hire that position?
That's correct.
Okay. So we'd have to have a three-quarters vote to change that vote if we were going to do that?
Okay. Well, I'm just looking at some options here and how to soften this somewhat, and I think the department has to, you know, make some adjustments to this emergency situation. It's an emergency, we have to do it. And I think a particular department should pony up to that. So how would we, what would the motion be for, for that? How would you want that?
If there's a motion on the floor to approve the purchase, you could amend it in some manner if you wanted to.
Looking for, looking for some direction on how you'd like to amend that?
I'm not sure what you're trying to accomplish.
Well, I'm not trying to take this money from the assistant chief and not take that dollar amount that we haven't spent till the end of this year. So I think we've been without a chief since, what, April, May?
Yeah, I, I understand now what you want to do with that, require a three-quarters vote then. Could we, and can we mix and match those two items since there was already action taken? So to amend something previously adopted would, that was already on the agenda, would have to go back on the agenda.
Okay.
So we could do that at the next meeting if you wanted to.
Okay.
We could approve the truck tonight if you wanted to.
We could approve the truck tonight, yes.
And then the funding at, if we want to change that funding model, we could do that at the following meeting. I'm not sure what happens because that's a motion at both cities. Would both cities have to approve that? As if it's only...
It must be approved regardless of whether we have this...
It was already... I think we're, we're having a little bit of issues. The attorney is saying that...
Why don't we do this, mayor? Let's act on this, and I'll talk with you during this next two weeks and the attorney, and we'll see if that action is, if we can bring that back for a vote.
Sure, we can definitely bring something back. I'm not sure exactly what the motion would be, but...
All right, thank you.
Sure. Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Chief Fox, you, you mentioned that if this engine wouldn't have gone bad, we don't know how bad it is, how long would you have run this truck if this thing was running fine yet?
At the most, one more year.
Okay. I was afraid you were going to say three, four more years.
No.
And that you would have, after that year, you, if it was still running good, you would have been screaming that we have to change it, or...
Well, I, I think at that point, it's worth something, and you would be able to get some money out of it, is what it amounts to yet. But now it's to the point where we can't get any money unless we stick money in, and how much money are we going to invest in it to get to a point where it's going to be worth something?
And you can cut me short if you have to, Mr. Mayor, about the, about the response times on, and you said, you said something about that there was this areas that were short?
Not short. It's at the different response times.
Okay, that, that was the concern, the response time for certain areas, so maybe we don't need a truck in every, every station if we're just short in certain areas.
You shorten areas for response for EMS calls.
Yeah, for EMS calls. Could you get back to us and let me know what that areas are?
Should we have a workshop on EMS and the fire department?
I think we should.
I mean, this, this is an issue that comes up probably what, every six to eight months, it seems like? Or at least once every time we have a change of council members?
Every time we run short of money.
We could schedule a workshop for October or some, maybe somewhere in there. Okay. Can I put that on your list, Debbie? Okay. So we have a motion on the table right now to purchase this, the, the fire truck for $387,000 at this point. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item L is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is ordinance 14, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Title 1 of the Code of Ordinances for Polling Places. Do we have a motion? Alderman, Plingdon, do you want to make that motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion for ordinance 0-14-15, an ordinance amending Title 2, Chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances, the polling places.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? It was at committee as well. Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 2 is Resolution 26, approving the city of Manashe's liability insurance renewal through CivMac. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve R-26-15, a resolution approving the city of Manashe's liability insurance renewal through Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Items 3 and 4 are both refinancings. Resolution 27 is approving a application to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow $11,180,853.03. We have to do the 3 cents, please? Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve Resolution 27-15, the resolution approving application to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow $11,180,853.03 from the State Trust Fund and authorizing the borrowing and the issuance of certificates of indebtedness and levying a tax in connection therewith.
Second. There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussion?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it about the 3 cents?
No.
Okay.
No, it's about the 11 million.
Okay.
Director Stino, when people hear 11 million, they're going to, their ears are going to say, what? Did I just hear 11 million? Could you explain how this is a refinancing of previous debt, please?
Correct. This is the exact amount that'll be on our books at the end of 2015. Because we did the refinancings of a publicly borrowed issue at the last, last meeting, there's a formula within the State Trust Fund Loan Program that allows us to then run that through the formula, and since we took new State Trust Fund loan dollars at that point, we can then look at current existing State Trust Fund loans and see if there's any interest savings to be achieved by doing refinancings. The reason we have the two set out here, one of them is 11 million, nothing changes with the outstanding obligation that's already on our books, except for we save about $192,000 over the remaining 12 years of the loan.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I just wanted to thank Director Stino for almost saving the city $200,000 by this refinancing. And it's, it's just great that you stay on top of that, and when we can make these adjustments, we make them. So thank you for your hard work.
Seeing no other discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item number 5 is Resolution 29-15. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve Resolution 28-15, the resolution approving application to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow $768,633.07 from the State Trust Fund and authorizing the borrowing and the issuance of certificates of indebtedness and levying a tax in connection therewith.
There's a motion, a second. Do you have discussion, Alderman Nichols?
I did. Director Stino, could you explain again that, how this is a refinancing of current debt?
So the same rule applies. This is also part of the refinancing, the refinancing that we did last time with regard to the publicly borrowed debt, and we had a little bit of capacity left in the authorization. So this debt on Tit 11 was selected, again, no change with the existing debt that's out there, except for over the next 18 years, we're going to save approximately $401,500.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 5 is Resolution 29, and it's a resolution approving a 2015 capital improvement budget adjustment for the purchase of a fire truck and the accompanying borrowing to be included with the 2016 capital improvements program borrowing. This resolution also needs an author, so the person that would make the motion, we would also list as the author of this resolution. Is there a motion? Alderman, better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion for a resolution, R-29-15, and I'll be the author, and I did want to point out that our portion of that $407,000 is $160,561 on that.
Thank you. Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Is there any discussion of taking this out of our reserve or emergency funds?
Alderman, Alderman. Did I get you, is that a promotion or a demotion?
Thank you. I would highly discourage that. That's not something, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get our financial house back in order, and that's not something that would be advisable as part of that plan.
How big of an impact would 160,000 have on our...
It's not the impact of that, it's the impact that when something comes up that you need to buy, that you're willing to basically raid the fund. And that's not something under a sound financial management plan that would be acceptable. Because the next question is, then when should we take it next time? If it was something that was completely unique, wasn't anything to do with, you know, operating a vehicle or something that was a once in a lifetime, it would be acceptable. We would certainly have to explain it as part of that, but since this is the second time in two years that this has happened, I would not call this infrequent or irregular.
Yeah, I had different disagreement with the last one, but that's, that's beside the point. This is kind of an emergency, and we won't know the impact about this until we put the budget together, and I have no clue where the budget stands as, as of now. And maybe the mayor wants to weigh in on that. How does the budget stand?
We are just starting to put the budget together at this point.
You've got some big expenditures coming for next year.
The budget will be difficult as it is every year, so, but I can't tell you where it's going to land at this point and how we're going to do it.
Any household would be looking at things in their budget at this point. When we're throwing out $200,000 here, $300,000 there, they'd say, wait a minute, something's got to give next year, and, or there's a tax increase, and, and well, there's a reelection, so you don't want a big tax increase, so...
People, we'll be working on the budget over the next two months, and then it will come to the council, and I can't give you a preview on it yet at this point, other than what we had in the CIP last year that we had looked at.
Was there ever a case where you had a midterm discussion on where the budget lies?
As, as in...
As in where are we facing, what are we facing, and how are we working with the budget? Is it working?
That's what the CIP is for, and yes, we track the budget on a monthly basis, and each of the department heads also tracks their budget, and they will alert us, and when we have staff meetings, we will talk about who's over and who's under, and working to make sure that we stay within that budget at the end of the year.
Could the council be brought up to speed on that, or we have to ask individually?
We could, we could do a, well, actually, we'd like to do a, at least a semi-annual, if not a quarterly, report.
I would like that, or for future people.
And now that we have a second HR person, we may have more capacity to do that, so...
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like to think about some solutions, since this is a recurring issue. We dealt with this last year, and we have it again this year, and I agree with Alderman Better that we're talking about $160,000 as Manashe's portion of a new truck in this instance. Has any thought, and this could be a question for the chief as well as Director Stino, has any thought been given to a vehicle replacement fund for the fire department similar to the one the police department has for vehicle replacement as well as the Public Works facility?
Either one of us can answer that.
Okay. Actually, that's not a bad idea. The problem is, is you have to start it. So how do you start it? Do we start it by budgeting additional funds each year? Usually in a, the case of a fire truck, which is a larger expenditure, usually that's larger than those other expenditures we've talked about, you know, as far as the police vehicles go, they're, and I'm sorry to use this word, but they're more disposable type of equipment that really gets budgeted in the regular budget. So we could certainly look at pre-funding some of those replacements, but really the best long-term plan is to space them out in a capital improvement program plan that you can monitor and do it on a more regular basis as you go along. And just because we budget for it in one year doesn't mean it has to happen. You know, we can budget for it a bit prematurely, knowing that we're trying to, you know, hit a certain target each year. It stops the peaks and valleys, and then if, you know, we don't need it that year, then we just carry those funds over into the next year. Certainly, we don't want to do that with a lot of things, but then another part of that plan is the reprioritization of when something like that comes up, you know, you take a look at all of the things you have in your plan, and if it is the top priority for the organization, what then falls off the top of the list and needs to be readjusted?
And I'm hearing that we, we typically, for some projects, we do budget incrementally, incrementally, like we saved, budgeted and saved funds for the city hall roof replacement, and we've budgeted and saved funds over a number of years for the election machines. So it's not something that's out of the ordinary, but we'd have to weigh the pros and cons of doing that.
It's not something out of the ordinary, but I think in both of those examples you just brought out, it wasn't technically a plan to save. It was, we thought they were going to be ready for new voting machines earlier, and we thought we were going to do roof replacements earlier, and we couldn't, you know, we couldn't make the numbers work, and we had to budget them as two projects together. So those happened luckily. Those weren't necessarily planned out to happen that way. But yeah, if you can plan that way and you can store a little bit of money away each year, that's a good plan.
I think that's something to consider, and getting back to the, the capital improvements plan, I feel like we have some communication problems on this, this issue right now, and I think what was provided by the, the chief is a good start, but I also think that that replacement schedule might benefit from, an eye from the Joint Finance and Personnel Committee, something that can be looked at, at that level, and then also present it to the council at budget time so that we can all get on the same page moving forward. Absolutely. Thank you.
I did want to make a comment about the replacement fund. The only issue with starting the replacement fund, as Director Stino said, is if we start budgeting 1/25th of a truck each year, or 1/20th of a truck each year, as well as borrowing for the current truck, that means we're paying for two trucks at the same time until we get the, the replacement plan started, and...
And we don't have the capacity to pay for our current needs, as well as our future needs right now. Maybe a few years out, we might be able to, but we just couldn't afford to do that right now.
And I understand that. I think that's part of weighing the pros and cons of that decision.
Alderman Zalinski.
I disagree with the borrowing. I think it's an emergency, and I was told that our neighbors are getting restless.
Which ones? Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-1.
Item 6 is Resolution 13. It's a resolution approving a 2015 budget adjustment for the purchase of land within the TID 9 account. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve Resolution 30-15, the resolution approving a 2015 budget adjustment for the purchase of land within the TID number 9 account.
Is there a second? Is a motion, a second discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Director Stino, is this money available within TID 9 right now?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Alderman Zalinski.
Are there any ongoing expenses coming up doing TID 9? Mark or Greg can explain?
Actually, Director Stino has run a scenario for this, to show us... Okay.
So I do have, I did do a scenario, and the reason I did this scenario was because of the refinancing we did at the last meeting, that had $1.9 million balloon payment coming in 2017. Well, as part of the refinancing, we were able to level that out. Now, this doesn't include any additional projects that I know you'll want Director Kyle to tell you about. But at the end of 2014, we had approximately $700,000 in TID 9. And the increment that is coming in is approximately $600,000 per year. The debt service over the next 10 or so years until that closes out is just under $500,000. So if you think of it where it has a balance of about $700 right now, it's going to pick up about $125-ish thousand per year. And then I'll let Director Kyle tell you about the specific projects.
So what we have planned, in addition to this land acquisition, is the Province Terrace Trail Extension. And so there'll be some land acquisition costs there, and then the cost for the trail construction. We're also planning on constructing the trail north of Manitowoc Road to connect up to Midway. And then we also have some planned sidewalk for next year on Manitowoc Road that will be funded out of the...
For trail.
Or a trail.
Likely a trail.
So those are three things I don't know.
And Province Terrace itself. Province Terrace Street itself as well.
Yeah, I was just saying, the streets. Okay. In the future.
Didn't we approve those sidewalks last year? I think it was Providence Trail? No, Providence, what's the street along, right along Oneida? Wasn't there sidewalks approved there? Were those ever put in?
No, we didn't have sidewalks for Province Terrace.
Providence Terrace. What's the one that runs parallel with the...
Province Terrace.
Okay.
The discussion was sidewalk on both sides.
And we went with sidewalks on both sides, didn't we?
No.
Were they put in yet?
No.
Were they supposed to be done this year?
The trail, we were going to try to get some of that in, but the sidewalk would be part of the final, when the street is put in.
Okay, because I heard it was a big rush, and not even in yet.
And then we had the trail on Manitowoc Road that was budgeted for this year. But as I, in a recent meeting, had a memo to the council regarding that. And we were looking to postpone that, to look at other options.
Well, then there's discussion in the park in Rec about trails in Barker's Farm, and there's a connection that we don't even, I don't even know if we have land for. Is that part of this also? Where they're building that new facility out there?
Right.
We approved the trail extension to a street, now they want to extend that to the park. Is that part of this?
We didn't discuss where that money was coming from. There could be a parkland.
Well, it'll be for Don to figure out next budget, his guess.
I'm going to put you in charge of the next budget, Dan.
Okay. Confused about trails now, and where the money's coming from.
Is there further discussion on Resolution 30? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-2.
Item O is public comments in any matter listed on the agenda, and I see Mrs. Taylor is raring to go. Oops, I don't think you're on mic, Sandy. Is it working? Is it working? It did sound like it was working. You couldn't have...
First of all, Alderman Langdon, I'm glad you're here. Hang in there. I wanted to comment on the bridge after the DOT spoke. I have been to both of the public meetings. I have been to an informal meeting up here in the council. And then I've met with presidents of primarily the Headwaters condominium. As I mentioned at the beginning of tonight, there's always more than what meets the eye. And you have to ask questions. And personally, I think if the DOT would have met with the neighborhood on the north side of the bridge, and the south side of the bridge, we probably could have came up with two or three really good options that made everybody happy. The problem is, the city got involved. And I'm being honest here. And by the city, I'm saying the mayor, community development, and public works. They have an agenda of where they want this bridge, what they want to do. And this bridge is being aligned to facilitate their agenda. Number one, RR Donely. We don't own RR Donely, and the DOT was told, "Stay away from RR Donely." Number two was to shift it away from Faith Technologies on the north. Number three, that we have a historic district on the west side of Racine Street, basically Club Tavern, Club Liquor, those buildings. Yes, they are in the historic district, but you can remove them, just like you put them in. And this could have been done months ago. So, but now they're like, "We're too far into the project that, you know, we are already starting our environmental impact." It would have been much more beneficial to look at that area than take property off of the tax base that's waterfront property. What this, so, and then on top of it, this whole alignment, which is shifting the bridge to the east, which will have a negative impact on all the property owners along the waterfront, and the surrounding neighborhood of Broad and Kais, is, by shifting it to the east, we're, I'm kind of lost my train of thought here. We've, that's what I want to say. Well, we are impacting things, but it's all based on the fact that the mayor, I believe, does not want to divert traffic longer than one year. A new bridge, and we're all for a new bridge. Nobody's saying, "Keep the old bridge." A new bridge will take two years to construct. Doesn't matter if we, you know, tear it all down and put it right back where the same place is, and that's what we're kind of aiming at, put it right back where the current bridge is. What they're trying to do is keep the current bridge in place while we build a new bridge. That's where we're getting this swing out to the east, that we can have two bridges working simultaneously. Well, in my opinion, staging and construction and all the configuration of working all this around and still keeping traffic flowing is ridiculous. I mean, as of today, we can't access 41 from Racine Street. One is going to be shut down for a year, one's going to be shut down for two years. This bridge detour will be a block down to Taco. You know, so to me, it's kind of like, "Let's take the bridge out." They did this in Oak Street in Nina. Their excuse is they don't want to be near the dam. Oak Street goes right over a dam. You know, they put it right back in the same location it was. There's a roundabout, but they didn't put it at the bottom of the bridge in Nina by the library. They put it down farther to facilitate the intersection of East-North Water. It's a perfect example. I'm not opposed to roundabouts. But if you put a roundabout at the bottom of the bridge on Main Street, all it's going to do is open up this funnel of traffic that people trying to get to Broad, which is a one-way street, our only access down Broad. If you're coming from the north, you're coming north on Racine, you can only take a left to get to my home and a bunch of other homes. Once you have that traffic flowing, and that's the idea of a roundabout, you keep traffic flowing. Trying to get, we're going to be, we're going to be clogging up traffic past Third Street. I mean, there's so many things. I know my time is limited. I encourage any and all of you, most of you know me, give me a call, stop over, I'll go over all of this with you. Because there's a lot of things that could have been handled differently, and now, all of a sudden, we're on this, we have to approve this now. And I'm glad that they worked things out for the Riverway area, and they've shifted it away to lessen the impact. But we're clear-cutting trees. That peninsula, there's eagles in that peninsula. We're clear-cutting things. We're, I mean, taking over Doc Larson's property, we'll be clear-cutting those trees. And this whole thing is based on premises of what three individuals, possibly four, want, just because of a delay of one year. And this bridge is told to be lasting 75 to 80 years. So really, in perspective, what is one year? A detour to Taco Street. Thank you.
With that, do we have a motion to recess to the Board of Public Works? We are at recess, thank you.